Transfer of a liquor license, T I S H A Incorporated, D B A Red Tomato Pizza to R E H A Incorporated. And I'm going to ask you to just pronounce your name so that I don't mess it up.
Anastasio.
Anastasio.
Kiras.
Kiras, okay. So we have the individual here who is representing the person to whom we're transferring this license. Do you have any comments, Sandy, as far as getting the information that we needed to the Quavino?
No, I think I have everything. I'll just scan it and send it over in the morning. Then we just wait, just the waiting.
Yep.
Do we have any butters or anyone of interest to this public hearing who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, is the board prepared to vote?
I move to approve the transfer, the liquor license transfer from T I S H A Inc. Doing business as Red Tomato Pizza to R E H A Inc. Anastasio Kiras.
Manager.
Manager.
We have a motion made, now seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
It's a busy place.
Yes, it is.
It's a busy place.
It's a good place.
You excited?
Yeah.
Okay. When is the final day of you actually starting?
We don't have an exact date, but it's soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Look forward to your success.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving along, we'll go back to approval of meeting minutes on March 4th and then welcome public comments after that.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from Monday, March 4th.
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 4th.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve, as written, the meeting minutes for March 4th. And this will be for immediate release, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have an opportunity here for public comment, brief as it is, but we're ready to do that if we have any public comment.
This is general public comment?
I'm sorry?
Or just pursuant to this?
I'm sorry?
Pursuant to?
Anything you'd like.
Anything like?
Well, within reason, I mean, it can't be something abhorrent, but of course.
I would like to know, it can't be something what?
Abhorrent.
Abhorrent. I would like to know who insures the town.
We'll give that to our town administrator to respond to. It's actually, it's a kind of conglomerate group that deals and manages most of the insurances for all of the municipalities.
Maya.
Maya.
Maya?
Yeah.
Can I, you know, could you give me contact info and a representative?
I can give you contact information. Her name's Joey and I don't have her phone number with me, but if you want, you can stop up and then I'll have it ready for you.
Okay.
And I'll get that for you.
And the contact info and address and stuff?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the reason I'm asking for the insurance, when I get that Freedom of Information Act piece on the grant that was put out by Robert Gauske for the grant money from FEMA, it said that this apparatus engine eight, five, excuse me, that was deplorable shape, that it was noncompliant, that it was an hazardous vehicle. And that was in '21. So three years later and that apparatus is still in use. If it's a menace, if it's a hazard and not DOT compliant, which is all written in that application, why is that vehicle still used?
Well, I would say it's because the only one we probably have access to to do what job.
It is an absolute liability. If everything is in the.
Well, I would say to you that Maya comes on the property and actually inspects what they're insuring.
I'm not talking about them inspecting, I'm talking about what's in the disclosure from Robert Gauske saying that it's not DOT compliant. That's of his own words. And all the other compliances are not there either. And that vehicle is still in use. And it's admittedly being used and noncompliant. And only that was sent out of town three times, to three other towns. And however many other mutual aids along the way, I have no idea. Anytime that, matter of fact, it's not just out of town, but that were on the hook is the taxpayer. It doesn't feel warm and gooey to me to be on the hook for an apparatus that is attested to be noncompliant.
Well, it seems like a good reason to replace it.
Seems like a good reason to take it out of service, John.
I think it depends on the situation, I think is, you know, and we can reach out to the insurance as well to, but if they're willing to insure it, I think there may be some people who would prefer a beat up truck show up to put out their house fire than no truck show up.
I'm not here about the other people. I'm here about my liability here in Barry.
And that's what our insurance is and she'll get you the contact information because that insurance is what covers our liability there.
And I believe that it's your purview as a selectman to take that apparatus offline.
I think.
That is your charge to save my liability that that apparatus is being used under attested constraints that it's out of compliance.
My expectation.
So I think it's you guys.
Yeah, the thing, the thing that I think we would have to, you know, spend some time to look at, it might be under, certain things are sort of grandfathered in for a period of time and the new vehicle that is now required, okay, of the department is different than the vehicle that was all authorized in, you know, five or 10 or 20 years ago. And so there may be some input from the Maya Insurance Company because I don't see them, you know, doing as you said, you know, kind of taking the liability of something that is substantively, shouldn't be used anywhere anytime. So I would like just to have them kind of comment on it and have a conversation with us. You bring up a good point, but I don't.
Take it out of service until you've had that comment.
We may have done that. It may have been done. It may be some.
It's still being used.
Now, as of now, as of now, it's insured. We have insurance on it. Now, what you're asking us to do essentially is look at what does that do to our insurance rate? How much does it impact? Because that's where the cost is to the town.
Well, I'm asking you to take it out of service.
All right.
It is a liability according to the fire chief in his document.
As of now that.
Day at night in '21 and it is still in service.
And as of now, that liability rests with the insurance company.
Well, it ends up on my back. That's where it rests with. When the town gets sued because of this, they're not going to say, no, Neil, Neil doesn't have to pay because he brought it up at selectmen's meeting and he's off the hook.
Well, Neil, I think you and I can go back and forth ad nauseam. The most important thing.
We do this every time. Let's have a decision, please.
I can't make a decision without going to our insurance company.
Your fire chief tells you the thing is noncompliant.
Listen, it's noncompliant with current guidelines. It may not be unable to function properly and safely at a fire, okay? It's sort of like when I bought, if I'm going to trade, if I'm going to trade in a car, I trade in a car that whatever, it meets the requirements in 19 or 20, 20, 20, 20. And now the requirements are different. But if I can still pass a, some kind of an inspection, but it doesn't meet all of the qualifications of a new car, the new car has to do this, this and this.
That's hypotheticals. I'm talking about fact that your fire chief has told you in this document that it is noncompliant.
Well, I want to tell you, we don't have an answer for you and we're not going to do as you asked tonight without contacting our insurance company and talking with them about the liabilities issues that you've raised. They're good issues for us to investigate further. I understand what, you know, you look at it and you say, this doesn't make sense, Maureen. I get it. My concern is, does it make sense to the insurance company? If it does, because they're taking our money and insuring it and giving us liability for it, is it costing us more because of its condition? Is it not costing us more? Is this typically done? Those are the questions we'd have to ask them.
So we can get those numbers, we can find out how much it's adding to the cost, make sure that we're covered for any issues that could come up and go from there. But as of now, it is covered by our insurance.
There was another point I may want to, the next one. I understand that a letter of recommendation went to, so you said Eileen, the director? Is that correct?
What, a letter of what?
The letter of recommendation go to Eileen?
What do you mean? A letter of recommendation to?
Recommendation.
Did she, did she request and I?
About she requested, did you give her?
I did.
The letter of recommendation?
Yes, I did.
You did. Okay, are you also aware of why she was at, as I understand, you gave her a choice of resigning or being fired?
I would tell you that's a personnel matter that is not for public discourse and I won't consider it. So move on. Move on.
Excuse you one second, I'm having an episode right now. I don't have a pass out on the floor.
Well, he's thinking, passing on the floor, may I ask you a question?
Make sure he's okay.
So you won't answer that question? So, I'm sorry. I don't want to have to dial 911.
We have, we have a chief right behind us. He knows what to do.
So I have, I have a question about that. If you wanted to give a letter of recommendation and if the hearsay is anywhere near correct, why would you do that?
I am not going to discuss with you a personnel matter, number one. Number two, I could care less about your hearsay, okay? So I am going to move on from this particular line of discussion because it is a personnel matter and.
Okay, take it away from the personnel. So on whose authority did you write that letter of recommendation? Did the other board members, did you have a meeting on that? When was that meeting held?
I can't remember if we had a specific meeting, this was in consultation with the district, with the attorney.
John, are you knowledgeable of that letter?
I'm not familiar with that particular letter.
Not familiar, so you were.
I'm also not, I have not been involved with all the conversations with our attorneys and I'm not going to get into personnel issues though.
Okay, that's not, I'm not asking you to, I'm just asking you, if you were informed, if you sat on this board and voted to give that person a letter of recommendation?
Again, I'm, let's move on. We're not going to discuss this any further.
This is your main.
I don't, no, it's not your main.
It is.
It isn't on the agenda, this is a public comment session, it's, we're moving on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
It is about you that I have the issue.
Well, you know what?
It is about you because you have not, you've not asked the other board members if they're in compliance and you're acting as the board instead of being a person on the board.
I am following the directive of our attorney.
The directive is you act solely on your own?
No.
When do you get the vote from the?
Okay, I'm, I'll look at, sir, just, just let it go because I'm not going to continue the conversation. Did you have something to say?
Are you, do you think you're involved in this?
Did you have something to say?
I don't know anything about it.
You don't know anything about it?
And you don't know anything about it.
So you acted on your own?
I'm not, I was not involved in the conversations with our lawyer.
The select body is. It's not about personnel, it's about the actions of this board. So you're acting as a board without authority?
You're, in your opinion, sir, that's all I'll say.
In my opinion, yes.
In your opinion, your opinion is so noted, move on. Mr. Lipson, please.
If this is a board of directors.
If you're going back to the same conversation.
Well, wait, I'm speaking.
Move on.
Well, do you want to go back to the problem of having people thrown out if you don't like what they say?
Oh, absolutely not, but I just tell you, when it's a personnel matter that we can't really discuss in detail.
If I can't, Sam, the other aspect, there are parts of person.
What I'm asking, what I'm asking, just generally, if there's a letter of recommendation, a referral or whatever you want to call it, from the, from the town of Barry or from the board of the selectmen, no one person can make that decision without the approval of one other person.
Actually, Sam, I believe some personnel issues and that may fall under it, we'll have to check, can fall under the town administrator as the person in charge of.
Has the town administrator signed or written or developed or directed a letter of reference to be sent to this young lady, Eileen, whose name I do not know?
That's a good thing.
What's a good thing?
So you're not talking about this person?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, but has a letter of, has a letter of?
She cannot discuss a personnel issue, Sam.
I don't know if this can be true, but it seems to me.
We can't, we're not even supposed to say if there is a letter or not, that's a personnel issue.
It seems to me that if you are here for the benefit of the people, it's your responsibility to act as a board, not unilaterally. And if you don't know anything about it and you're not sure about it and you hide behind the, what do you call it, human resources rule or regulation and the attorney is not here to explain, something stinks.
Sam.
And I'm not finished.
I can tell you, the attorney's not here because it wasn't on the agenda and we didn't know this was a topic tonight.
So, but this is public comment?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just saying that's why the attorney's not here for it.
So maybe next time we ought to, and maybe, maybe you guys, you selectmen, should talk amongst yourselves and say, let's have another selectmen's meeting next week, not in two weeks or three weeks, because we have some critical things, because it seems as though one, one person specifically, Maureen Marshall, seems to be thinking that this is Marshallville and she can make decisions unilaterally. And if you read my letter of two, two or three selectmen's meetings ago, it brought to your attention that you, Maureen, are acting unilaterally and we don't like it.
Sam, one, this isn't certainly on the agenda and I don't necessarily agree with you at all. I take umbrage at your remarks. I take umbrage at the fact that you would put in play an individual's whose personnel matters are confidential and make it seem and give a first name and all of that nonsense. That's wrong. And if you want to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, please feel free to do so. And I will have our attorney here to discuss this, to the degree she may, because it is a confidential matter. I will tell you that, that removal of this person by her resignation was certainly known by you. It was known by you, it was certainly known by you, Tammy. There was issues of concern where Mark had plenty of insight and operated and did a lot of footwork and has a lot more information even than I have. And Tammy, you as well. And so to say that Marshall was unilaterally doing this is absolutely incorrect and improper. So I'm going to move on because it wasn't on the agenda and we will now move to town administrator report if we may.
Well, thank you for listening.
Oh, I always like to listen to you, Sam.
Thanks, Maureen.
So I met with, I talked with Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission this last few weeks. We discussed the green communities. We are in the process of updating, we haven't had a grant since FY '22. So all that information for us to get for FY '25 has to be completed with all the questions and stuff that they had given me for FY '22 and FY '23. So I am in the process of getting all that done so we can go ahead forward with our green communities. Once I go ahead and answer all those questions, what they end up doing is they will complete a, you know, report gets updated, they will complete it, an energy vendor, and then they would come out and do an energy audit with us. That's okay. Another thing I wanted to bring up to the select board is they had mentioned our energy reduction plan. They wanted to come out to talk with the select board about the Quavon Regional School District. It's very important that we also play a good part with them as well with our energy reduction plan. So I wanted to see if you would like to hear them come out and mention reamending that and including the schools with that, since we have a big part in that as well. It also helps the town by committing with the schools as well. So is that something that everybody on the select board would be interested in doing?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Yep.
Also, John and I had done a Zoom meeting with Central Mass Regional Planning and we talked about our master plan. We talked about regionalization, he's going to get into a lot of that when he gets over there, starts talking about it. Another thing, I have gone out and I have reached out to get more playground proposals and in the process of hearing back from some vendors off statewide contract lists because we have to make sure that we are following our procurement guidelines and we just can't go out and just choose whomever. We have to make sure we're sticking to the correct process that will be to follow. Another thing I've gone and done is make quotes, get quotes for our town hall, for our escape, our fire escapes in, painting, just waiting to hear back from them. And there's only one other thing that I wanted to bring out.
Jamie, you have not heard from a painting contractor yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I had a gentleman that called me, sort of, I think by accident. I will make sure that he gets a call into you.
Excellent.
He's out of the Springfield area.
Okay.
The company is.
Great. Just one more thing I want to mention, Chief Gauske is going to be out for, since March 17th to March 31st. This is just due for a, his required annual training requirement for the National Guard unit, I just wanted to make everybody known. He had sent that to me. That's it.
Okay, select board reports. John, you have anything?
Sure, yeah. As Tammy said, we met with CMR PC, we have some great options there, we're looking at for continuing the master plan. One I wanted to bring up to the board, there's a regionalization grant that seems interesting. It potentially covers the first year of regionalization between two different towns. And there's a few areas that we could look at, we've talked about maintenance, finding different, you know, either partnering with the school, something along those lines. But we also, you know, the DPW commission discussed how there were a lack of, you know, people taking job openings. If we can regionalize, we could potentially be able to afford a mechanic so we're not paying for someone to go out, things like that. It's just something to begin looking into. Our police department, you know, they have a great setup there and there are other towns that might be, you know, able to work with us so we can start to flush those out. The grant itself would need to be applied for next February. So what we would need to do essentially is start making connections with other towns, seeing what areas they would be interested in regionalizing in and start, you know, working towards that because at the end of the day, the costs of things are going up in a way that we need to find some alternatives for, other than just getting, you know, raising tax rates.
I believe that Harbiston is not in the Central Mass Regional Planning catchment area, I think they're in the, maybe Watch, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, they might be under Watch Uset, not.
Yeah. Is that, is that a problem?
No. So this, this CMR PC will, can help us, you know, apply for the grant, but the grant is actually from the state. So, and regionalization, the way it works is, you know, ideally it's just at will between towns. So while it's working for one town and another town to come together, we can, we can work on those things. So it's something we want to look into. And the reason I want to bring it up to the board is that I think at the next meeting it would be good to appoint someone on the board to start working towards that and making those connections. I know Maureen's done a lot with regionalizing with the schools, but, you know, we're going to see what the composition looks like next week. And so I wanted to bring that up as an opportunity just to get everyone on the same page about potentially appointing someone to work on that next week, not next week, at the next regular meeting. So, I think, yeah, master, oh, yeah.
So is it like a proposal that you're looking to regionalize the DPW with another town?
Potentially. There's, it's basically looking at one town, you know, the same way we have regionalized with building inspector, things along those lines, potentially our DPW could, you know, pool resources together or, you know, if there's another DPW that wants to, you know, merge into it, something along those lines. Doesn't have to be DPW. I think realistically, one of the areas to really look at is the maintenance that we've been discussing, the facilities aspect of it, because we don't have a facilities department, that could be a good starting point. But, you know, also the police, I know, I mean, we have a really strong police station here. I know there's other towns that, you know, may not have as many officers available to be on duty, things like that. And, you know, we would bring in, we would work out a deal and I don't know what that deal would be with other towns, whether it's split a certain way, whether it's compensation coming in. And then, you know, having that shared pool of resources can go farther if you don't need two separate loaders for two towns next to each other, for example. You know, I default to DPW sometimes just because I'm, you know, equipment wise, I'm more familiar with it than what the police use.
Like, what town would get the loader?
So that's, all of those details would have to be worked out. That's what, so the planning process is going to be on the lengthy side, but.
I think.
We'd have to find out if anyone would even be interested and then find out what would work best between us and them. And if it doesn't work well for us, we don't do it. If it doesn't work well for them, we don't do it.
The only comment I would make, and I'll be done. You said there was like a problem, I took it as there's a problem bringing people in. I don't think there's a problem, I think there's a pay problem.
Exactly, exactly.
I hope people want to, you know, other towns are hiring at a lot more money, especially for the DPW. There's been vacant DPW jobs for years, like.
Oh, I know, that's, that's what, that's what was at the.
You hire a CBL or under the Federal Motor Carrier Act now that they don't have, there's an additional upwards of $10,000 if they need a, you know, or, and I do recognize the investment in the contract this time, you know, it was, it was more significant than it has been, but like that's the direction I think it's going to go in, if you want to bring people in.
Well, I, I don't think there's, I think you're absolutely right. It is a pay scale issue that's not bringing people into the DPW. And ideally what this would do is by bringing in resources, you know, some sort of shared cost with another town, we could increase that position's value. We could increase what the pay could be to try and bring people in. I don't know how realistically to do that without dramatically increasing taxes, other than partnering with another town. So I think we're just, you know, I think it's worth exploring to see if we can get creative to try and make something happen.
I think on the maintenance part, you're, like, that's a good avenue.
Yeah.
You know, splitting a heavy equipment operator, a mechanic between, especially to get certified in fire trucks and police vehicles, it's a whole different certification.
Yep.
Unless you're like a big shoe sprayer or something.
Yeah.
It's not enough vehicles to run through or nothing.
Yeah, and there's different ways, you know, there's, there's other towns that have done it where, not necessarily with those, but with the regionalization grants, you know, whether it's full, you know, whether it's full mergers or just certain positions, whether it's just one person, there's, there's a lot of ways to do it. And so at this point, it would just be finding out if there's interest in any portion of that with other towns, but, you know, that's not something I'm comfortable just going out and doing on my own and I think the board should appoint someone for that, if that makes sense, just to all be on the same page with that and then someone be able to report back what they find. I mean, it's a, it's a great, it's a very valuable grant if there's the opportunity for it. It covers the entire cost of whatever the merger would be for a year. That's significant, especially, you know.
I think also that we do a little of that, we do a little of that with the town of Hardwick with ambulance services. We do a little with New Braintree, we do a little with Senior Center with Hardwick. So we have had some experience in a very small way, but.
Yep, so if we can do that on, you know, any sort of scale, it's a grant that the state is pushing, more or less. They're, they're looking for ways for towns to save money too, you know? Everyone's looking for that right now because things are astronomical, so.
No, I, I, we got a lot going on here, so things I've said aren't really on the front page here, other than circling back and looking at some of the things we've kicked down the road, you know, like we talked about inventory, you know, town property and equipment, tools, everything, you know, throughout. I want to look at that and then back again about the personal use policies on the vehicles, town seals, identification. That's about it right now. Those are things I wanted to talk about in the future, but the other things I've done, it's all, you know, I'm busy during the day and I don't have any more time.
Okay. Okay, so basically I think that we've covered the waterfront with what some of the things that we are thinking about and working on. I would say that we're very concerned about the town hall and the Henry Woods building and the fact that we have failed in our last inspection on our fire escapes. And so trying to get a fire escape company to come and actually, you know, do the kind of iron work that's probably necessary has been a little bit of a challenge for us. We do know that we, our town hall needs painting and so forth and so we're working to make sure that we get initially at least the front of the, of the building prepared for the 250th because I think that's important according to the folks. So we're, we've solicited some people to come and give us their vote, but we've gotten no response yet, except for this one company out of, out of Springfield. So we'll try to get them and see if they will come over and take a look at the property. If we just do the front, it's probably under, considerably under $50,000, so we don't have to get too busy with procurement. But at any rate, we're, we are working on that. But other than that, I would just say, just to not make you feel bad, but when the four, four or five towns got together and decided they were going to regionalize their schools, they started in 1955 and it happened in 1965. So just, just to say, but I mean, that was, that's pretty big. I mean, taking all their children and, you know, fixing all of that up, so.
Yeah, one, one town and one other town can, you know, work together a lot easier than five towns can work together. And you can always start small and, you know, and especially if we can show the benefit with a small, small action together, that can spread.
And I do think that the other towns are having conversations about this too, because they're, they're having a really hard time providing the level of services they want to the, to the population and are unable to really sustain it. So, good idea, and I, and I participated in those community compact grants before, and those have been quite rewarding, so that's a good thing. Correspondence of any significance, you've got anything? A national tree, national grid tree pruning and tree removals is ongoing in the town? I mean, if you've driven, driven around, you see there's a lot of work going on by national grids and so forth, so. Anything specific from that, Timmy, that you want to chat about or?
No, just like.
No, they're just, they're just telling you on the given date range, that's all.
Okay, we have our insurance advisory council here, and our insurance advisory council is for health insurance. And we do have a number of members here from various, shall we say, employment sections of our community. And our treasurer, who is here tonight to just talk a little bit about, well, this is a renewal period for us. It's time for us to look at what is Maya, you know, offering the community. And I know you can do a great job on that, Jake.
Maureen, I just like to call the insurance advisory committee meeting to order because we also.
Oh, I didn't realize you had a quorum.
As well, because we have a form here, so I just wanted to make that known.
Okay, and you're certainly welcome to come up more to the front seats if that's a little bit, you know, more acceptable for you.
And also, do you want to know what the recommendation was? Can I get any of this recommendation?
Okay, Jake, go ahead, walk us through.
Didn't want to start before I was supposed to. So we've had two main primary questions that have come before us. The first and foremost, as you probably recall from the joint meeting with the IAC, was about changing the cost split. We had an employee meeting as we had planned to, we talked about different options, including a high deductible plan. There wasn't much interest in that at this time, certainly not enough for Maya to propose to Blue Cross. So we're pretty much still with the PPO plan and with the general HMO plans.
Could you just talk a little bit about the cost split, what it is currently?
So the cost split currently is 62.38.
62% of the cost is paid by the employer, us.
Yep, and 38 by the employee.
Okay, and could you talk a little bit about what is the function and responsibility of the advisory committee as they come forward with this information?
So the insurance advisory committee is a committee made up of town employees, principally our unions and some general representatives for our retiring population and for the rest of employees. Their role is to consider the options and to make recommendations to the select board. You are the final deciding party on the subject. So it's really your vote that makes the decision. The IAC has presently recommended that we accept the 8.45% increase that Maya has proposed for us and make no changes to our present insurance plans.
Okay.
Now, on the handouts that I gave you, on the back page, you can see breakdowns of what that's going to cost. We had considered decrement options, which could have helped lower the price for employees and for the town. One of the main ones was simplifying our present tier. Right now, employees are paying $10 if they're seeing mental health, 15 for regular office visit, and 20 for specialists. So one of the decrements we've considered was simplifying to $30 as the co-pay, one co-pay, $30 across the board. Another potential co-pay option was $100 deductible for high-cost imaging like PET scans, MRIs, CAT scans. That doesn't get as much as the co-pay, but it does help reduce. The big takeaway is that no matter what, the cost shift is probably going to cost the town about $7,000 and change per percent. The town administrator and I would recommend 2%, probably over a four-year period, and that would help bring relief to employees. On the other hand, the thing to consider for the town is that if we swallow eight, and well, roughly eight and a half percent, it's easier to say, for the town, that's about $38,000 plus any cost shift that you do. So if you're doing, you're going to accept that increase, you're looking at $14,000 on top of 38,000.
If you did two years.
Two percentage points, so cost shift. Because the idea is to get to 30.70, which would be much closer to the standard. Most towns are 30.70 or 25.75. We are very low, according to our Maya representative, out of Maya's clients, there's only two of us this low. And the other one is presently moving theirs upward 1% a year. They're lower than us, I think they're at 51%, horribly.
I think that's the law, I think that's the law, you have to do at least 51%.
They're trying to move up 1% a year, each year. We think we can probably find a way to do 2%. The only question is, like I said, if we're accepting the increases as they come and not seeking decrements or mitigation to the cost, it makes it that much more expensive for the town. You know, as I know in my handout to you, depending on what decrements you accept, you could be as little as $33,000 increase plus the $14,000 for the cost shift.
Yeah.
So, in the past, employees have shown that they are willing to make compromises. Last year, we did change our co-pay substantially from, I think it was 50 to 150 because with the rise in urgent care, less people are going to the ER than they used to. So it's not hitting people as hard as it might otherwise. So those are kind of the two takeaways, is the fact that it's going to probably cost about $14,000 or so a year to do a cost shift, plus whatever the percentages that we accept.
Could you, when you say it'll cost about $14,000, that's $7,000 for each.
Roughly, seven and change, because it's about 14, I think, let me see on, if we do the 8.45% increase, you're looking at, on a 2% shift on page two, you'll see it's about $14,428.
And that would go up for next, for the, that's two in the same year?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then if we did it next year, obviously it would be a little higher than seven because.
You'd be building in the new increase, yes.
Okay, because I'm guessing the insurances will go up again.
But if you look at some of my other pages where we cost out some of the decrements, you'll see that the increase, no matter how you look at it, like at a 7.35% increase on page four, you'll see it's still $14,288. So 1% in increase is only impacting about $200 or $300 on that bottom line. So the number is still pretty solid to decision make on, because next year, it's probably just going to go up $200 or $300 from what it is now.
So is, was, could you talk a little bit about the vote and what the, you know, associate, or should the group, the insurance advisory group is?
Well, there, there is some concern, and I'm sure the other members can speak to that, about continuing to see the detriment path. Many want to keep their health insurance plan the same and preserve its benefits to employees. The problem I see as a treasurer is that we're going to keep getting these large increases. A lot of towns have already dealt with this particular issue. Our plan is a very good plan because a lot of other towns have already made compromises. It depends on where you put the premium. We aren't necessarily able to offer a lot of people higher wages, so offering good benefits is important. And that is an emphasis for the committee, obviously. My concern again is that the town is having to swallow a substantial amount of this, but also employees. If you look at the last page again, you can see with the 8.5 that a lot of employees are going to be paid more. It's going to be like $27 more for an individual plan on HMO Blue on a monthly basis. You're looking 27.61 more under eight and a half percent per month. And that is to prevent us from doing any of the decrements. But the reality is that we do have some employees that only go to the doctor a few times a year and paying $27 more a month times 12 is far more than they're saving on the lower deductibles or no deductibles. So, you know, but if we play, as you can see in the box below that, with the proposed premium splits, and we look at those different percentages, you can see how it doesn't make a huge difference, but we can find a way to chart it so that the price for employees is staying pretty lower. And we're able to preserve it, but we might still need to consider something like a decrement. The reason decrements are helpful is it saves you money. So instead of increasing by 38, you're increasing by, say, 33, and then you're doing the cost shift, cost shift on top of it. But if you're not doing that, the other problem you have is equitable mitigation, which is that, again, like I said, for that employee that's not going to the doctor much, they're bearing the burden with everyone equally, even though they don't use the insurance as much as, say, somebody else. So we have to try to balance all competing parties. Increasing something like a deductible or a co-pay puts a little bit more pain on the people who are using the policy heavily and arguably, to some extent, driving the increases. Because the more we use our insurance, the more the price will go up over time. We had hoped last year when we had a high increase that it would go down because our insurer talked about a lot of people were going and getting care, they deferred during the pandemic. So they were seeing spikes. The problem for this year is that they can't keep nurses.
Yeah.
So hospitals are having to hire travel nurses, they're paying way more. So they're coming to entities like Blue Cross and demanding 80% increases in fees. And you also have the rise of new drugs, like the new weight loss drugs. They cost 10,000, tens of thousands of dollars a month. According to Blue Cross, that's a huge driver of their increases besides the staffing problems. They're saying both problems together are why a lot of their rates are going up. And their range, I think this year, was between 2% and 10%. They originally wanted us at nine something, and then our agent got the underwriters to come down to the eight and a half. So, you know, like I said, it really, it's up to the board ultimately to make a decision, but that's kind of where we stand. Some people feel that we need to preserve what we have, some people feel that we need to try to mitigate a little bit to serve a balance of the place.
One thing that I would, we've had some conversations with our attorney regarding the changing the shift. Technically, in the contracts that people have, the DPW contract, the contract that exists between the fire department, employees for EMT kind of work and so forth, and the police, I think I said, the police contract. Because in the contract, it's very specific as to the, you know, the cost share, the board cannot unilaterally say, yep, we're going to do that, we have to negotiate it.
Okay.
Not that I'm thinking they'll run away if we want to, you know, pay a bigger share, but.
I would imagine they'd be eager to have a shift too.
Yes, and, but, you know, so, so that would, that stalls us from saying to you tonight, oh, hey, we could do a 1% or a 2% shift.
Well, I think there is probably some union buying in this extent that the unions are represented on the IAC, the unequivocally uniformly back shift, shifting premiums, so.
Well, you know, that's, but I mean, we, we still have to go through the process.
I know, I understand the formal process.
So, so tonight, whatever, we, we couldn't, okay, we couldn't say, yeah, we accept this. We can say we will take this under advisement and obviously meet with, with the unions with, after the advice of our attorney because I guess that's what we have to do. As far as choosing eight and a half or following the recommendation of the advisory committee, while it is just a recommendation, obviously, the board can discuss that recommendation about the eight and a, 8.45% and whether or not that is something they have questions about. They may want to deliberate about it, I'm not, I'm not sure. And this is the first time actually sitting down as a group and, you know, having this conversation. But the split, we would have to, the board would have to negotiate with.
That I understand. So what's left for tonight is sort of whether or not you want to accept the IAC's recommendations or whether you want to choose any of the alternatives, it's up to you.
Okay. Oh, I'd, I'd like to hear if there's anyone from the committee.
Sure, thank you. I think Jake did a good job explaining that. You'll be sat very recently and discuss what Maya presented to us, as you can see in the paper before you, 8.45% increase. Obviously, that's a large increase. Like Jake said, the high deductible plan, nobody was interested in. And the decrements that were, that were presented, you know, doubling co-pay to go to a doctor's visit, going from $0 to $100 in the imaging, and then increasing the specialist from 25 to 30. If those decrements were implemented together, save the 1.1%. So we're still, we as the employee and the town, it'd be 7.35-ish percent still, with us then burdening double the co-pay on top of it. It just did not seem, seemed to make sense to us. We, it was four out of the five of us that were there, and it was, out of the four, it was unanimous. We have since talked to the, the fifth member, and they agreed. We've also polled our workplaces that we represent, and there's not one, one employee who did not go along with our recommendation or would not.
I, I think, I think what's important too is, you probably have this number on the top of your head. What is the, you know, the town will be paying more, but what would your premium change?
So my, so I, so like me, I have HMO, and it go, if we're for a family plan, I believe it goes up around $66. For a single plan, it goes up between 27.
$66 a month?
I'm sorry, yes, yes. And then a single plan goes, on an HMO, mind you, it goes from 27, 30, 31 a month.
Yeah.
But as a note on that, employees will lose their coe as a result of, of accepting that much, especially people on a family plan where you're looking at 67 or so dollars. Because for most people, they're going to be lucky if they're taking $40 in extra net pay after a 2 or 2.5% coe in most cases. And for those of us on family plans, it, it will eat up, be lucky if we have anything left in our net pay for an increase. So that's, that's part of the tough balancing.
Just to add into that, is, you know, the past few years, we've had significant increases. And we've done these, you know, these co-pay changes and whatnot, so it's been put on the burden of, of the employees to try and keep a lower percentage. And as these keep going up and keep going up, everything keeps getting shifted, so we're having to pay higher co-pays, which is starting to really tax, you know, all the people, all the employees. This has been something that I've seen throughout my career here, is we give a 2% coe up, but then the health insurance goes up a specific amount, 4%, 6%, and the coe gets eaten up. You know, in 1999, Richie Ankaus came to the board of select and asked to have the percentages changed. That's a long time without any change.
That's a long time.
So it gets back to the cost shift really being the biggest driver. That's the way to help employees, but the problem, again, becomes the town having to bind the funds.
I know, I think, I've worked at places previously that would give some sort of stipend if you didn't take health insurance.
I've worked at those places too.
Situations, but it seems like if you could get one person whose wife or husband had another plan, and say, oh, I'll take that and then shift over, if you lose one person off of our plan, it would seem like that premium would probably make some trouble.
It all depends how large the stipend is to get them to move, you know.
Yeah, well, yeah, some people aren't going to take it and they're just going to get it because they have insurance here anyways. But there might be some people.
Exactly, so, but I mean.
We'll tell you, our policy is expensive enough that we do have some employees, including these swatted at the library, that will not go on our insurance plan, even though it might work out better for them than their husband's plan. But it is because the husband has a high deductible plan, similar to Mr. Dixon, and as a result, they're very happy with that.
Yeah.
You would think on paper that our plan is better, but it would kill her wages. She wouldn't, she'd basically be working for the health insurance.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I don't.
If I could just go through, all right, so the, the table on page seven, the proposed premium splits, the, the numbers in the final column, that is what it would be per year for.
The numbers in the final part, you're talking about the, what I'm talking about, the overall price increase, like the 38,000?
Uh, no, the table below that, so under PPO individuals, 64.36, the 414.49.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yep.
Could we get a copy of the table?
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, of course, I have a couple of.
So I just, I just want to make sure I understand what that column is.
I think it's just a difference in the split, just being.
Right, right, but is, is that 414, is that annual cost for an employee, annual cost for the town?
Oh, do you mean the 414.49 under the 64.36?
Yes, yeah, that whole column there.
That's the employee.
Okay, so that's annual employee cost?
That's showing you what the employee would pay per month.
Per month.
Per month, okay.
Per month. So that 414.49 is the PPO individual, PPO is the more expensive plan, and that's what they would pay per month. Obviously, every shift you do, like you see next to it, if you did a 3% shift instead of a 2, it'd be 402.97.
Okay.
So the cost shift does help employees considerably.
Yeah, so, so what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to here though, just looking at the 8.5 and the 7.4% columns, just seeing how much of a difference that actually makes. So for the PPO individual, just taking the 63, sorry, the 64.36, just for example. So for that first one, it's a difference of $4.50 a month. The second one, it's a difference of $10 a month.
Yep.
Third one, $3 a month, and the last one, $8 a month. So that's what the difference would be per month for those different plans.
Yes.
And then that's what we're looking at as far as that offsetting the decrements. Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
That just shows that depending on what you do, whether it's decrement or whether it's cost split change, that's the impact that it has. But the thing to know is that if you chart sort of between both of them, you can really help employees and the town. Mostly you can help the town afford to help employees with the cost split. Because the cost split shift is what's really going to drive down costs for employees. It will drive them up for the town, but it will drive them down for employees.
Well, I mean, that's part of what we've been talking about with, you know, not being able to, to offer a good enough pay rate to get people to apply for different jobs that we have open. It's, you know, part of the...
So there is a strategy for you. You could accept the eight and a half and then do the cost shift and go talk to by it.
Well, well, there's, there's no...
So we all enjoy it, I'm sure.
No, but...
I mean, there's, there's, unfortunately, you know, there's, there's a lot of things over the last several decades have not, you know, kept up in a way that we're now having difficulty with equipment and difficulty affording, you know, to fill positions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's, it's tricky, it's tricky for sure.
And, and the thing that we, we know is true is that we're not the only town that's going through this particular struggle.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, thinking about ways in which communities can get together to mitigate some of the costs because we're doing greater efficiency of scale. I mean, it's a possibility, but you and I both know that'll be politically difficult to, to make happen. Um, I think what is really helpful for us is to understand, um, the numbers.
Yeah.
And to, to appreciate, you know, what, how many people are on what. And we can figure that out or get that information from you later, I'm sure. Um, I know that we do have to make a decision relatively quickly because I know that the Maya is waiting for us to...
April first.
April first.
Oh, is that off?
Well, and I think that's, that's why, you know, that's why I wanted to kind of focus on the difference between the eight and a half plan and the seven point, you know, seven point four percent increase. You know, looking at realistically, what is that change for families per month? And, you know, would those decrements be worth it? And I mean, so I, the recommendation from the committee was the...
Recommendation was the eight point four five percent.
Yep.
Okay.
And that was the recommendation.
And with the, and with the hope that the cost split would be adjusted.
I'm sorry?
And with the hope that the cost split would be adjusted.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So I would, I would say that...
Also suggested that our coal was very low compared to other communities and so just, well, one of the lower was...
So, so it, would, what they need to know is if we're going to eight point five, right? They don't need to know how we're gonna pay for this.
Right, but we need to make a decision before we can do anything with that share split. So I, that's, yeah, split, yeah. But so, so I guess what I'm trying to understand is regardless of a split change, is that still the recommendation?
Their recommendation is you do the split change?
What, I'm saying if, if we're not discussing the split change because we can't do that tonight.
We took two votes.
Is it still the recommendation to do the eight point five percent option?
Yeah, we had taken the two votes. One was, the first vote that we, our recommendation was the eight point four five percent increase. The second vote was for the percentage increase.
Okay, I just wanted to, to be sure because we can't promise the split share change until all the stuff Maureen said happens. Okay.
But obviously, that, that split situation could be addressed relatively quickly if we have a cooperative union group to work with.
Brief conversation with our business agent was that, uh, because all of our union members are being represented, it could be just handled with an MOU.
I would love that. That would...
We've done it before on, on other projects. And I think we, it could be done in the same manner.
Okay. Great, you know. Okay, so I, obviously, we'll, we'd need to talk, want to talk with our attorney just to make sure we're moving in the right direction. And I don't know if the, if the board is prepared to, to vote on any portion of this at this time or we'll leave it until next week.
Well, I mean, I, I, I certainly think I would err on the side of retaining employees and keeping, you know, with what the recommendation was from the vast majority of employees, it seems. So I, I'm certainly leaning that way. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve the, uh...
To approve their recommendation of the eight point four five?
Yeah.
And to have consideration of, of the sixty-four?
No, I'm not, I wouldn't include that in the motion. Nope, that's, that's gonna be separate.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We have a motion made and seconded to accept the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Group as presented, uh, the proposed premium of, for, that are indicated on this sheet at the eight point four five percent increase for the PPO individual, PPO family, HMO individual, HMO family. The board prepared to vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's a vote. Okay, and I would recommend that the unions send me a letter? Not me, board?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, we'll bring that to our attention of our attorney and hopefully be able to take care of it as quickly as, um, your, your union person said we can.
Okay, so basically, a letter from the union saying that they approve, if you folks approve the two percent, um...
It would be amenable to you or acceptable to you or whatever, yeah.
Oh, we just have to run it through legal counsel and make sure everything's good on that end, but...
And, and our legal counsel is probably just like your legal counsel. They want to write the, you know, the MOU by themselves. So I would say our attorneys can just talk and make a quick, quick work of this and so forth. You can talk with Maya, giving them the information that they need by April first.
Yep.
Um, and I can talk with the attorney to see if she can be available to have a conversation with us. Okay?
Alright.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
As a taxpayer in this town, uh, and I know Tammy's new here and a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of things didn't happen because we didn't have a permanent administrator in. There are other options. West suburb here is a great option. Uh, they work with communities almost like a regional, uh, system. Kevin Meschara, over in Shrewsbury, is the town administrator. He works with, uh, with them. They bring in new towns all the time. Uh, the GIC is still an option.
Yep.
I know there's not enough time this year because of everything that happened. But as a taxpayer in the town, I'd much rather see the employees have decent insurance and the budget not be balanced on their backs of their healthcare.
Right.
Uh, and there's other areas that, you know...
And, and I know that the GIC has gotten oftentimes a bad name.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. I mean, I, I have insurance from the GIC and I couldn't be happier. It's, 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 um, it's very, you know, no, no health insurance is reasonable, seems, but, but I, I would say that, uh, GIC is, is much better than it used to be. And I know that there are insurance groups or, or, you know, I think they would call consultants that can come into a community and really talk it through. Now, I would say that the hardest thing I've seen in working with changing insurance is to move away from the blues is really hard for people because they haven't tried anything else yet. Uh, but I would say, um, you know, matching Medex against, um, it's, it's not called Harvard Pilgrim Health anymore. It's called something else. But it's, it's an easy, they are, they are very, very much the same and there's not a lot of lost stuff. But I, you're right to say that insurance consultants can come in and they can really work and tell us, you can try different things, give you numbers. But again, I've found, at least certainly in the school district and other places I've worked, certainly, no one wants to move away from the blues.
The, the other option, some of the unions, I don't, I know Teamsters have a health and welfare fund.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I work for a union, the, we're not here, but the union I work for, like, we could go into an employer and even management goes on. And, and in this case, the Teamsters could turn around and offer through their health and wel- welfare. They have them set up as a nonprofit, so, you know, their overhead is a lot lower than, you know, let's say Maya, you know, so...
Maya is also a nonprofit. It's an association that's exclusively governed.
Blue Cross Blue Shield's a nonprofit.
And Blue Cross, the only reason they have the relationship that they do with them is because they go back very far and Blue Cross will customize their plans to Maya in ways that, uh, other insurers won't. The other thing is we are governed by mass general law and what our policies have to cover and not cover and stuff like that. So I, I'm sure that something like the Teamsters could come up with something that could conform to that. But Maya has a little bit of a edge on it because they've been around a lot.
Yeah.
The two biggest ones are Maya and Hampshire County Group. Uh, Hampshire County is pretty much all of Western Mass at this point, and Maya is pretty much western Eastern Mass, so...
Yeah, but also, um, if we were to leave Maya too, I know that, um, that our committee has discussed this with our insurance firm in the past about, um, looking at other, other venues. But, um, if we were to leave Maya, there's like a two-year window that we would not be able to go back to them.
That's correct.
And there's also a cutoff where if whatever, we would be responsible for any...
There's a liability cost that we can become responsible for.
Yeah, what's left over, yeah.
Have to pay that.
Mm-hmm.
That was one thing that they cautioned us on.
Which is the only reason we haven't considered, trust me, a lot of towns have plotted how to get out of Maya. Because, because the, the favorite right now is Hampshire Group and they have stopped accepting new members, more or less. And so, uh, the problem is that we're too small to get our claims data. So to go out and RFP or to talk to other entities, because that's probably who talked to the Teamsters. They'd want to know what our claims data was.
Yeah.
Because that's how you kind of determine your risk pool. Uh, the problem is we can't get that because we have less than a hundred employees.
Yeah.
So, and again, if we leave them, we get locked out. We know that Hampshire Group's not taking anybody right now and probably wouldn't take us without that knowledge either. Because that was another town I worked in, petitioned them and they said, well, give us your claims data. They said, we're too small. The other thing is a joint purchasing authority can be developed. Um, some towns have tried to do that, but, um, Maya and their competitors will find ways to undermine it.
One thing, there is, um, some, some legislation for rural communities that does include some, some information that, that is being hopefully pushed rather slowly, uh, through, through the, the House and the Senate. And, um, so there would be some relief for us with that.
I'm glad to hear it. I'm glad to hear it, I hope the general court does, because we need, we need it in a number of areas.
Ann Goby, of course, is now the Director of Rural Affairs, and so that doesn't hurt us, that helps us. And, um, the only problem is revenues at the state level have been way below estimates and that's a very troubling thing. And what will happen in April will be the, will be the, the final test. And if it's off as much as the rest of the year has been, I think all of us hold our breath because it's gonna be a rough ride in F five twenty-five. Very difficult ride. Although that's right, no, thank you all for coming. Appreciate your work and, uh, taking it, the time to put together a, a really good presentation for us. We understand the situation and hopeful that we can work with our attorneys and our unions to, to mitigate some of the impact on our employees and we'd love to do more, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Snow and ice deficit spending approval, which is kind of perfunctory, but why don't you walk us through that, please, Tammy?
Um, if it's from the, um, town accountant, they just, past practice you've had, she's always gotten the select board for deficit spending on the budget, so she's requesting approval of that at this time.
Okay, so the deficit spending is on what we didn't have in the budget that it ended up costing us in snow and ice removal?
Right, so if there's anything more that comes through snow and ice, it possibly could go through deficit.
Hopefully not, but, okay. Um, do we have any questions or for Tammy about that?
What, what's left and out, thirty?
It was like thirty-nine hundred, somewhere around thirty-four, fifty-four, twenty-five, yeah.
So if we have a March snowstorm, we'll need it.
Do we have any more snowstorms?
Oh, don't tell me that. I haven't never gotten through a day, a March without at least one snow day, so... Okay, so, um, do we have a, a motion to deficit spend as required by statute and recommended by our town accountant?
I'll move to, uh...
Authorize?
To, yeah, I'll move to authorize the snow and ice deficit spending.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the snow and ice deficit spending as required. This is a perfunctory thing that's done on an annual basis. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Okay, I think this is yours, John, uh, a legal contract policy, or contact, I'm sorry.
Oh, um, so, yeah, uh, put this on here to essentially start going over and reviewing. Uh, did not actually get into it quite as much as I had hoped to. Uh, but what we have for our policies on contacting legal counsel, um, it's just something that's come up where we are, I don't know, where we are financially with that right now.
We're getting low in funds, a couple thousand dollars. We have to definitely put more into that budget because down the road, we had another attorney that was a flat rate. We no longer have that flat rate. So every time we make a call or anything, we do anything, it's important that we know where we are at our budget. So with that being said, I'd like to make sure that I know where we're at when asking for legal advice.
And so as, as part of that, now that it is, you know, per call situation, um, wanted to look through, review if we have any policy. I don't believe we do from what I've found so far. Um, so to potentially put together a policy on who and why we would be contacting legal counsel to not have, you know, any departments going overboard.
So they will go through...
Essentially, it would go through Tammy.
Okay.
But we, we would need to actually put together a proposal for it, put it out to everyone to review. But we need to, we just need to start looking at how we can be careful where it is on call now. Yeah.
I mean, Jim Baird had, uh, you know, a very, very modest requirement for funding and now it's very different. Yes, sir?
Question on the, on that.
Mm-hmm.
Recently, we, uh, with that sewer upgrades that are happening, um, Sewer Commission, Sewer Department, signed a contract with the county's legal service. So that, that money, that full contract is with the Sewer Commission. So would the commission not have that ability to be able to contact the...
I think you, I think you just have to bring up...
So I think that's what we need to write into is what are the situations that we need to go through? So, I mean, that, that could look a bunch of different ways and that's what we need to start really fleshing out. You know, can, you know, the board or the town administrator give general approval for specific contact on specific projects? Um, I don't know that everything necessarily has to go directly through the town administrator, but we need to be, you know, at, at least to some extent, you know, being able to say, this is something it should be used for. This is something it shouldn't be used for and having a policy in place. And I think it's gonna take a bit of work to figure out what exactly that policy was, will be, and getting input from different departments on what cases would need it. Is it better, you know, are there specific uses that we'd want to write directly into it? Is there a certain approval method for specific uses for, you know, things along those lines? Is what we need to start working towards because it's just, you know, we're, we're coming up on that budget quickly now that we've switched over to this. Not that we wanted to switch over, our, our previous legal counsel retired. But now that we're in this type of, you know, financial situation where it is per, per call, we need to be careful.
So if it's something that, um, we could get in contact, so we just had a, a situation recently where it took several days to get the contract signed. Where, um, you know, they'll fence the Tammy or anything else, but we had the, we had the contract, went to Tammy, went to lawyers. They responded back to Tammy, responded back to us, with like a whole, you know, there's, there's a lot of middle people in between.
Mm-hmm.
So is it something that, you know, as part of our contract with the Sewer Commission, can we get that contact and go direct?
Well, here's, here's the problem that we often have with KP Law. KP Law has a, a whole suite, shall we say, of lawyers.
Right.
Depending on what day you call and what hour of the day you, you reach this person, you might get Susie Jones. Susie Jones begins work on the project, whatever it is. The next day you call, it's, oh, it's Martin Smith. And Martin Smith says, oh, I gotta, I gotta do a little catch-up here because I don't know what, you know, I didn't know what Susie Jones did. So we've found, we've not been particularly pleased with that runaround thing and what is costing us more money. Uh, so we're trying to keep an idea about, you know, what is this costing us? We're not trying to make this an impediment through Tammy. So we'll put together something that makes sense and try to get some, uh, some pressure on KP Law and also to take a look at what municipal attorneys who have a very small office, who's out there? Because quite frankly, KP Law, um, had, wrote articles for our town meeting, okay, last April, right? They said, this is the way they should look. We said, oh, okay. We rolled those out on the, we, we, we said, gave those to Ellen, said, this is it, Ellen, it's a go. We get there, they send a different lawyer than the one who put the thing together. And he got up and he said, this is all wrong. And so Ellen and I and the budget, you know, we're looking at this, what do you mean it's all wrong? And he's, he's trying to change it for us on the floor, which was not the way to do business, quite frankly. And then we, we found a similar situation even in the annual town meeting. So I, I could tell you that we have not had great, you know, kind of quick response. Um, so having, or thinking about a different municipal group of, of a much smaller operation, uh, I think that KP Law probably undercuts some of the smaller places, so it might be a little more expensive, but maybe a little more, I don't know, but we have, we haven't been impressed.
I will say, Tom, that actually went by really fast for us, believe it or not. But going back and forth, that's the first time I've actually seen him really get to me really fast. So everything that we did, everything that was going back and forth, he got back to us really fast. So with that being said...
But specifically, as far as the policy goes, you know, we might be able to put something along the lines of, you know, for specific projects, there's this many hours set aside for the contract that, you know, that whoever's working on that contract could be in contact with them type of thing. We just need to have a plan when we go into these different situations.
Well, it, our problem is, you know, changing, um, town administrators so often. It's been difficult to have a, a, a policy or a set of, um, responses that we generally follow. So we're working on that and we appreciate any input you can give us to make sure grant-funded programs that already have an amount in the budget, uh, that we, we, we just handle that by including our town administrator, for sure. Sir?
You want to regionalize something, regionalize a labor attorney, because you take what you guys spend on labor costs, you take what every other town spends on labor cost. Just a negotiated contract. They get paid by the word. You know, they might charge you fifteen, twenty-five thousand dollars just to negotiate a contract. If you and four or five communities have brought in an attorney, it's saving guys a lot of money.
I think that's what KP Law tried to say they were, I think. But I agree, there's other ways in which for us to try to manage the amount of, you know, illegal expense we have. And we've been so along with an individual person, you know, and Barry, who had a very low rate and very responsive, and I think we got a little spoiled. And then we had a change in our town administrator and a change in our attorneys, and so we've been skipping along, hoping for the best, and there are other ways to look at it.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you can't hope for the best. We need to prepare for, you know, managing our finances and our expectations.
So I would suspect, are you going to take the first whack at that policy, John, or are you?
Yeah, I'll finish going through the policies we have with Tammy and if we have anything, you know, on file downstairs for anything like that. And then draft up something, once we have something drafted, it'll go out for, you know, public comment before anything, whatever, go up for approval. And then we can get input from, you know, department heads.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Nope.
Okay. Does that help you?
Yes.
A fore-ask, okay. Moving along, the police department wants to talk about a drone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are working on implementing a drone. So I have the quote here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the total cost of the drone itself is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Out of that amount, we've been able to, we've received grants in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, so I'm asking for the remainder to come out of ARPA funds if possible.
Okay, so when you say eleven thousand dollars, where did those grants come from? You get ten thousand dollars for two grants awarded to, so Stetson School gave you?
Stetson School gave us.
Ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand dollars, and then Athol Savings Bank.
That's in school. Okay.
Athol Savings Bank gave us a thousand dollars.
Okay, and so you're looking for fifty-seven, fifty-four, forty-one from our?
Correct.
Anybody have comments?
The drone is a US-based company, which is becoming more and more prevalent, because it opens up funding to state and federal grants, which require that it be a.
What's the name of the company?
Sky Deal.
Is that the blue list? Is that how, I'm trying to remember what that's called.
I think it is, which is under some of the infrastructure, some kind of money coming out of the feds now. They have a requirement for the, you know, purchase of things.
It's, the blue list, I think, has to do with data security, once data is collected.
I currently have three drone pilots that are in our force currently. They are FAA licensed drone pilots. The purpose of this drone mostly would be search and rescue, to find lost individuals in the woods.
How often do you think you'd use this apparatus? I mean, for real police business, not for, let's look at the parade from above. Just saying.
Well, we just, we had two students walk off campus from Stetson last night. We would use it last night. I would say, now that the weather's getting.
That's why Stetson gave you ten thousand dollars. Got it.
We would use it fairly frequently, I think. Probably more often.
No, what's, for example, what's the warranty lifespan of this particular, you know, piece of equipment? I mean, is this something that lasts five years, ten years?
I mean, this should last ten years.
Even with changes in technology, you think?
Yeah, because a lot of the components you can see on the quote are modular.
Yeah.
So like the camera, there's a speaker and microphone that we've attached to it, so that if we locate a person, we can communicate with the spotlight. So it's definitely upgradable.
I don't have, go ahead.
No, just, is there like infrared technology with these?
Yeah, so it has a FLIR for looking at infrared.
With this.
It has a traditional camera as well.
How long is this power for before it needs to have a replacement battery or recharge?
That's, I think it's, I think it said forty-four minute runtime.
That's quick.
I mean, it does come with, it comes with spare batteries, too, so after forty-four minutes, I believe if the power gets down low enough, it'll automatically come back to your starting location, and then you can swap the batteries out and extend that.
It'll take you forty-five minutes to find out how to use all the buttons.
I think it's, what did you say, three officers are FAA-trained with these?
Yes.
Okay, here's my question. Because if I were a adjoining town, I'd be saying, "Good, Barry's got this." And I know that you're sort of obligated under, you know, sort of mutual aid, that Barry's going to get called for all of these situations that they might need a drone for. My issue is, that's, this is where we should be saying to them, "Yeah, we're going to provide you with mutual aid, but we want from you guys, you know, six thousand dollars," or, you know, because otherwise, we get all of this equipment and, you know, probably that all the surrounding towns will use it equal to or more than we do. Well, no, I mean.
I don't know if it's legal to charge for mutual aid.
Well, no, I'm not saying mutual aid. You say to them, just like we have an ambulance, but Hardwick pays a piece of it.
You have to have somebody available as well. If you're not available.
Right, if we don't have one of our licensed operators, then it's not going to be.
Okay, but you and I both know this, too. If we have three licensed operators, and I were you, and they called and said, "We have a three-year-old who's missing, and we live in East Cupcake," okay? You would be on the phone and you would say to one of the three, "Hey, we need you." And we'd be paying overtime if necessary, and we'd be providing that, and I would applaud it, okay? My only concern is, I just think we're going to be the Cadillac that other people get to use free. And I don't just mean with this. I just mean with our service delivery pattern, we've got more cars on the, more, you know, cruisers on the road. We have more really highly-trained police on the road, good thing, but we're backing up people who haven't paid their freight.
You're saying you want to regionalize?
Well, I am saying, well, I'm just, well, I'm just saying that I don't want to be an idiot about this, because, you know, it's like fifty-seven hundred from our ARPA funds. But I know that if I were in the other towns, I'd be saying, "Well, Barry has that, Barry has that." I wouldn't be saying, "Let's buy one." I'd be saying, "Barry has that, we're just calling for mutual aid." I would. So my only concern is, as far as, you know, the use of ARPA money, everybody comes in here, they're looking for ARPA money. I just want to make certain that we have very close attendance, attention to what we're doing with ARPA. I know you gave us a role thing that we've been looking at, and I think we're feeling, yeah, we know where we are. It's a good thing. Do we, do we need to have at least another conversation about where we are and, you know, should we go here? I think we can, but you and I both know we have some things out there with, what's it going to cost us to paint the town hall? What's it going to cost us to fix those fire escapes? These are costs that we didn't know we had until what the building inspector came and condemned them on both buildings. And so I have no idea what it costs to either maintain or to fix what we have on fire escapes. They are probably a hundred-plus years old. We also have a chimney collapse issue that we have some money to pay for the Barry Library as well, I think, coming up.
I have a question on that, by the way. What about the, you might know, the Barry Library Trust Fund?
Well, we do have some monies there.
Thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Eleven thousand of it, yeah.
Not expendable.
Yeah, and so we think, okay, that that is eligible money that we can use, but I think that was originally a grant. Somehow the library was involved, and I think we just have some questions with that. But I do think, yes, we have some, you know, some monies we can spend there.
I'd be more inclined to look at, you know, spending that rather than shorting the police department on this.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I want to shorten on it. I just want to make it very clear to those towns that surround us that, you know, they really, you know, they need to be able to have some organization where we can share equipment. When we own, when we pay for it all, and they're just sitting back there calling for mutual aid. I just, I know we have to provide it, and I would not want anybody's house to burn down, because Maureen was sitting there saying, "I don't care, it ain't paid, and go." But I worry that others are sitting back and just saying, "Let Barry do it." I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying, we're doing it now for probably the first fifty miles around us. What other town has this? What other town has it?
North Brookfield.
North Brookfield, well, there you go. That surprises me. Okay. But at least it's some, we never provide mutual aid out that way? We're mostly Hardwick, Peter Sam, O-Cam. Yeah, okay. But I'm just saying, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, in utilizing this money from ARPA, that we, that you have conversations with your local chiefs when you get together and say, "Hey, guys," you know, and because I have no problem talking with the selectmen over there and saying, "Hey, this is insane." And maybe they would say, "Too bad. You have to provide local aid anyway, so if you don't like it, don't buy it." They may say that to me, I don't know. Do you have any motions on the floor? After I've been whining.
We have some more comment.
Is it worth, I mean, we don't need to spend this nine or ten of this money this minute. Is it worth putting this on the agenda next time, or in two meetings and bring, and let me finish, please. And let me, and bring the other chiefs of different towns here and come to some understanding, instead of unilaterally making a decision either for or against.
Well, personally, as much as I understand the other towns thing, I think, you know, we do have an issue in town where it's needed for search and rescue. And, you know, parties involved in that have already put forward more than we're going to put forward on this. As far as the ARPA spending goes, I think, you know, maybe the move here is to put out one last call. Anyone who requests ARPA funding, and then at the next meeting, we put everything on a list and finalize where ARPA's going.
Well, we, yeah, we.
I certainly don't see any reason this couldn't be on that list, though.
Thomas.
If you were to put that. What, do you have to say, Mark?
No.
Thomas first.
If you were to put that on an Arpa list, I'd put that at the number one spot.
If you put it on.
On the ARPA list, put it at the number one spot.
I myself don't have any problem with it. I would make a motion to.
Okay. Authorized use of ARPA for fifty-seven, fifty-four, fifty-four, forty-one? Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Wait, did?
I did, I'm very discussion.
Did you, did you still want to comment?
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with ARPA to begin with, so in the effort of transparency, I would like to know what's left in the ARPA and where did the rest of it go?
We had that on the agenda on our last meeting, and at the next meeting, we will have an update on that, that, there were documents distributed on that. And we will have an update on that very specifically. I think we have another ARPA request potentially sitting in the audience. I could be wrong about that. But, and he already said he wouldn't put hers or his on the first part of the list. Didn't you say that?
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
And promise me, okay, that you get on your, you know, your comrades and say, "You know, the selectman's getting, I was saying, wait." Nice job, Jim, on getting those grants, though.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're at, okay, the nine eleven memorial committee update and discuss funding and grants. And that's you, Mr. Fleming, I believe.
And Mr. Fleming.
Oh, hi, how are you?
I'll stay here. Chicken. No, I'm not chicken. Hello, for letting this come before you. You were nice enough to let me talk at your last meeting, and you were talking about ARPA funding, my ears burnt up, ARPA funds, whatever. And I believe Sandy was kind enough to print out something you guys might have, which shows the bottom-line estimate on what's remaining for the nine eleven project.
I think I've seen it. Is it thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thirty-seven.
That's significantly less than. That's significantly less than what we had before.
No.
It was cut in half.
Okay, so where are we? I'm so sorry.
Our nine eleven committee had submitted from the help of Jason Benoit, who's our resident engineer. He put out specs to a lot of these granite companies in, you know, Vermont, Hampshire, with these photos in here of what's remaining for the nine eleven memorial, the specs, all of that. He'd gotten us some bids on that, which came back pretty high, so then he submitted to them, and they came back with a significant investment, which is around thirty-eight thousand dollars to finish what we'd like to do on the nine eleven memorial. We've exhausted what added to Kitty, except for, I think, two hundred dollars, and that, that's a drop in the bucket. The Barry Savings Foundation was kind enough, they gave us ten thousand. The Funnels to Towers Foundation gave us five thousand, so there's fifteen. And of that fifteen, you know, two hundred went, and we have a thirty-eight hundred dollar estimate to do the finished work on it. What we have currently on site is with the help and savings of a lot of money, of people on our board having physically done the work. Or that fifteen thousand would have been forty thousand, if we had to pay for all of that stuff. So I'm jumping around a little bit here. I had talked with John, I believe, at one of the meetings, and mentioned about grants. Grants aren't guaranteed, but, you know, it's like, if you don't ask the question, you don't get the answer. I have some information there with the grant that we had applied for before, but that was a few years ago when we had just received, you know, I think, how many million it was for the common project. So I think they thought Barry had gotten enough money that year, so unfortunately, we didn't get picked for it. But that grant is only up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
And that is for historical things like our common, obviously. I had submitted, or I had written up one time and we didn't get picked. Second time, I went to write it up again, and I missed the deadline by less than twenty-four hours. I didn't even know when it was. I just called them up to find about it, find out about it, and they said, "Oh, he missed, it was yesterday." Can't you grant me a waiver? And we're like, "No, we do that, we gotta do everybody." There's rules, so.
Yeah, grants are paid with those.
Yeah, you know, I understand that. I thought it was worth the try.
I also reached out to, to see if we could get anything earmarked for the project through discretionary spending through the state senate? Is that what it's called? Yeah. And I haven't heard back anything on that either, unfortunately.
Ask the Barthium's office or our new senator to, I did reach out to.
Well, now's the time, because we're moving right into the House budget, which should be reported out probably mid-April. So now's the time, because if you don't get in at least the House budget, you're only going to get it in the Senate, and then you can miss out on that.
You know, ideally, we, because of this being the town's anniversary, we would have loved to have this completed by this September eleventh, so we could dedicate it this same year.
Yeah, makes sense.
Because I think the town's dedication date is what, is it June something?
Well, that's the Founder's Day thing, which I guess is sort of the day, but the big day when they're going to do a lot of the stuff in the center of town, I think, is the twenty, is it twenty-first or twenty-fourth of September?
Yeah, okay, so September eleventh, that would have been right.
Oh, yeah, that would have been, yeah.
Nice to do that.
So this thing is much bigger than it is now.
Than it originally was?
Oh, my gosh, yeah. So this is like totally different than what I thought.
This is what was, this is primarily what was on the presentation.
Well, with all this, too?
I believe those, those in there when we saw the video fly through of it.
Our original design was that centerpiece.
Was this the centerpiece? Okay, well, I'm just behind, I guess.
But we had acquired for, oh, shoot, I forgot to call him. Ah, he's watching, I was gonna call him and put him on FaceTime, was Bill O'Donnell.
Oh, I know Bill.
Do you mind if I call him?
Sure.
Sorry, just give me a second here.
Uh, if we do have the, use ARPA for this, is this something that can be done before September eleventh this year?
Um, it's a two-month turnaround on the ordering of the material.
Okay.
Lining everything up with the moon and stars to get people to put it in place. It is doable.
Yep.
Sammy, do you know if there's any restriction on, like, on, on ARPA money to do something like this with it?
It's not, it's not, no, I think it's, it sounds on a.
Just check it, make sure.
Yeah.
Because I hate to say, yeah, we'll do this and then we find out we shouldn't have done it.
Yeah, this is all what the materials are.
Are you, are you gonna go to the charitable foundation as well and try to get?
We just sent them, uh, one of the men to send them.
I believe that that's, that meeting's coming up on the twenty-eighth of, of March with the charitable foundation.
Hi, Bill.
Yeah, I can show you.
It's fine, just a week here. Hey, Bill.
There's custom cut pieces, essentially.
Our sister city in Barry, Vermont, is also known as Rock City. There are granite cores there.
Yeah, if you wanna take a look through.
We've, uh. You guys reaching out to their select board.
Well, we've reached out to their granite companies. And that was, pretty sure that there, and there's also Atchison, Vaneos from that town.
Yep, that's from.
Yeah. They're named after Barry Vermont, uh, Barry Mass.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
We had Colonel Isaac Barry.
Uh, the story's actually on that, that, uh, that framed picture right there.
And the history is settled over a fight or something like.
Yes.
Fight in a barn.
Yeah, someone from Barry versus someone from Holden to name the town.
Yeah, to get the names of the town, huh? I, I don't.
I have a friend in Holden, we joke about that sometimes.
Breakdown of the pieces is in here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's just, I think this has that overall, um, price for it, but it is a breakdown of every cent.
Where is that?
I don't have it on me.
So, so Dennis, the, the platform that we see remains the same, it's just that there's new stuff put on it?
Well, no, um.
That it's expanded, the size of it?
No, the, the groundwork that's there right now is what's going to stay there.
Okay.
These other items will be added to either side of it and behind it.
Okay, so, so does this thing turn up, turn to a trapezoid?
No, that's shaped like the Pentagon.
Are we, are we like the Pentagon there? Isn't that just a rectangle?
No, it's a Pentagon shape.
Oh, well, I, shame on me.
Because this gentleman right here, who was at the Pentagon the day the plane hit.
Yeah.
That's what we have existed.
He acquired us a piece of the building.
Oh, excellent.
It's in, uh.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
It's in, uh, the safe downstairs.
Okay.
And then we have the two steel rails from the twin towers that go on the back.
Okay, so I'm with you now, I'm with you now.
And then there's a display for the Pennsylvania that we're working on getting a stone from Pennsylvania. And there'll be like little displays.
Yeah, I see that, that, yeah.
Show it.
Now, what, what, what kind of money are you looking for in your grant to the charitable foundation?
Um, they just put in five thousand to that, because they'd already given us ten. I didn't know if they had a cap or not. I mean, we'd gladly take as much as we could get. We didn't wanna get greedy. They were kind enough to give us ten thousand already, which we used every penny of it, except for the two hundred. And we've gotten a lot done, um, the sidewalk, and also through the public buying the pavers.
And there are more pavers we can buy, right?
There's no end to it.
Okay, and they just are replaced?
Yeah.
And, and, and what, what wasn't clear to me initially was, I thought you had to, like, have the paver be related to somebody who actually joined after nine eleven into the service, but you said I could do it for my dad who's World War II.
Right, well, there's two, there's two parts to that. The pavers, for people who served from the town of Barry when they enlisted since nine eleven, go in the Pentagon area.
Right.
Anybody else can go in the walkway.
In the walkway, okay. And the, and the bricks are better than the ones we use in the library?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that, well, you won't have sand and salt so much on yours, so that will make huge difference.
Was this a sample, actually? Yeah, this was one of the samples from the last time they presented.
Well, I, I wanted to see the engraving, 'cause that's the stuff that.
This is, just a short piece of one.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
Uh, Paul has it. And the other, see, this one has, like, where the plane went and where it landed or crashed.
Yeah.
And, uh, Pennsylvania, the one with Bill.
Yeah.
The, uh, piece of the Pentagon will be encapsulated, so somebody can't walk off with it or mess with it.
Yeah.
That will be encapsulated. And that, the story behind that's pretty much, we had somebody, you know, in town of Barry here that day.
Know if these rails were under.
The pavers, we've, uh, had a pretty good turnout for that. We've actually paid for and had them made, and there's quite a few of them that are at Paul Murphy's house. When the ground gets drier and we can get in there, they're gonna start replacing those this, you know, within probably a month or two.
Yeah, right.
And as people order them, we can, you know, replace them. And the, the only difference is, is the, around the Pentagon, it was specific for people in town, and there's people in town that were, um, on the fire department, uh, that were in the service, so we initially were going to have just this one project, but it morphed into two projects. The other one has been put on hold because it was to, um, when the decision, if there's a decision on a new fire station.
Right. It would be more appropriate, yeah, put it there.
Or we can go to one that gets fixed up.
Right.
That's something, that's Plan B, that's the second.
Plan B, I like that plan, yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't want anybody to think we were leaving them out, but, you know, a lot of these people did dual service. They served in the military and they also were pleased by them in EMS. And those people, if they choose to buy a brick, can go on the walkway. We limited what can be on the bricks as far as the decals. We have a nine eleven decal, it's kinda, is the unofficial one, and that is in the shape of the Pentagon. And then we have the branches of the service, including, um, like the Army Air Corps, so if somebody from World War II wanted to get one for a loved one, that's included. And we didn't wanna let anything else, 'cause, you know, no disrespect to Mickey Mouse, but we just didn't think it was appropriate to have Mickey Mouse on it. So, that's what we're looking at. I had solicited funds from, you know, like, um, the owner of the Patriots, Bob Kraft's Foundation. I sent them a letter, I've sent letters to quite a few places, you know. I wish it was as easy as doing it with the Barry Savings and Tunnels to Towers.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure they get in, David.
Yeah.
And they have to make choices, I'm not disrespecting anybody. I mean, like I said earlier, if you don't ask, the answer's no.
Yep.
And we wanna get this done, we don't wanna have to downsize it. We didn't, we took careful consideration, the committee did, um, with Charlie, um, on making it not so overpowering that it shadowed the other monuments. It was kinda funny, at one point somebody said, well, we don't want it too high. And I said, okay, what's too high? Well, we don't want it over, you say, eight feet? And I said, have you seen the Civil War? You know, but that's the centerpiece of the common.
That's the centerpiece, right.
And this doesn't interfere with any of that. And it's not gonna be so overpowering. I think the pieces that have been added to this are very significant and important.
I agree.
I don't know anybody that's got a piece of the Pentagon.
Yeah.
Or any town, I really don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty fortunate with that, and, um, there's a story behind it that's important, too.
So, so you're, so you're, you're thinking then, uh, five thousand dollars is gonna come from the charitable, so you're still thirty thousand out?
Yeah, thirty, thirty-two and some change.
Thirty-two.
What are the big ticket items?
The granite pieces.
Does the granite pieces?
And engraving on it, the shape of them, the sizes, um, and like the base for the, this base, uh, for the rails, 'cause we don't wanna disturb the rails. The rails are in two pieces, we don't wanna cut them, we don't wanna do anything to them other than coat them with a, a chemical that will not let it rust. And that's why they're gonna be on, like, this granite bed with crushed stone in it, so that when they're sitting there from now till eternity, that, that it's not gonna bleed rust all over it. There's still a granite antenna we're contemplating putting on the top of it. We originally thought about putting a piece of steel up there, stainless steel, but, um, I had a replica made by Matt Borelli of regular steel, and we put it up there, and, boy, it rusted right up, started to bleed over the side of the monument, and I was like, whoosh, get that thing off there. So we didn't, you know, wanna ruin anything. So, this base piece here, and then the steel rails go on it, we got a secure rail, these are all pieces that have to be cut to a certain, uh, size, same thing, like, look at the dimensions of that.
So, so all this prep work is in this amount? You think so?
Yeah, oh, that's it.
Prepped, shipped, and?
Um, they wanted to charge a certain amount for shipping and we're considering, um, taking care of that ourselves. If we can get it here on site, might be able to get somebody to go up there and get it, can always have the DPW do what they did with the piece, the slab that's down there now. Uh, a gentleman donated that, that owns the Hoppa Crossing, he donated that piece. And we had the town's loader come up and take it off the truck and bring it over, so that helped. And then, um, Rich Glidden's company, he's got this really cool, uh, device that uses suction.
Oh, yeah. I know, it's amazing, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
It was like, holy smokes. And those pillars are heavy.
Heavy.
And they also, um, we use strapping to get it on there, and they're pinned and dowelled and glued, and they're not going anywhere. So, that's where we're at.
So your request really is?
Let's say thirty-three. Round it up, round it up.
Okay. The, the only thing, again, I, I really would like to give us another week with ARPA or just.
You know, I understand.
I just make sure, because I, I don't, I know we've got some people who are saying they're gonna give us some idea about what it's gonna cost on the fire escapes and stuff, but we really do have to fix those.
I know, that's a secret.
You know?
And, you know, this monument isn't going anywhere.
Yeah, but we'd like to get it done.
I would like to get it done, that would be ideal. You know, if it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, if there's more important things, then there's more important things. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, just, um, depending on how this goes, you know, I'm willing, I offered, Dennis, this, it's nice being retired. If, if you guys think it would help raise money by me going up and talking to somebody in person, I'm just a day away.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Bill, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Charlie, do you have anything else?
No.
You covered it well.
I mean, I, you know, this is just personal, I'd really like to just take another look at the ARPA list, make sure we got everything, because we don't wanna make a promise we just can't keep, that's all.
But I'm just, I'm pleading our case, and, you know, where it goes from here is.
It's a good case.
I mean, I'd, I'd love to get it done. I'd love to get it done.
Yeah, and we've gotten so much of it done now.
Yeah, we have to finish it.
Through COVID, through illnesses, through, you know, people passing away that were on the committee, I mean, we've hung in there for quite a while, we're not, we're not gonna give up on it.
To date, how much have you put into it, fifteen thousand?
Oh, no more than that.
Yeah, that, uh, in dollars and cents.
Yep.
Double that with the labor.
Yeah.
Double that with labor, yep.
Yeah, well, that's for sure.
The money we saved.
Could you, could you send a digital copy of this as well? 'Cause I know the last one I got from you was, uh, that I shared with our, our state senator, was, was a much higher number than this, so I'd like to follow that up with this new one.
Yeah, this is the, this is the revamped.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause the last time I, I reached out to him, it was, well, I think it was over fifty thousand at that point, so.
Yeah.
Be good to say, you know.
We got, we got.
Take another look at this if you, you pass on it the first time.
I can ask Jason Benoit if he can do that.
That'd be great, yeah.
And get it to you.
Um, the only other question I have, if we're using ARPA, is there anything to do with procurement issues?
Well, this isn't high enough to be the.
It's not, okay. I always forget what number it is, if it's ten thousand or.
What they say is three reasonable quotes, right?
Right, right, but this is just like different pieces and the granite and anything like that, so.
I think we have a couple of other.
And I would, and I would say it's proprietary, so we wouldn't be bidding it, right? You know, it's, it would be a proprietary thing.
No, don't, don't get me wrong, I, I love seeing the number lower than the last estimate for it, just where it's the same materials and.
Jason Benoit did that.
That's great, that's great. I just wanna make sure we legally cross our Ts and D's, and I always like to, to check on that part.
I believe there were three he reached out to.
Great, okay.
And I'm sure he has the documents, because he's that kinda guy. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Tim, you'll put that in as a question mark kinda, kinda thing, so we can look at that?
Yeah.
And then just if any other department heads have, basically, we can make like one last call for ARPA, if anyone wants to put something up for consideration.
Yeah, something reasonable.
Well, up for consideration, we're not promising anything, but at some point, we need to stop and actually have our plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
Instead of, you know.
Now I'll get a breakdown of, uh, what, what each thing costs and.
Yeah, that would help, that would be good.
That'd be great, thank you. No, we have, we have to bind December thirtieth, thirty-first. We have to have at least the money, you know, like, a contract to fix this and a contract to fix that, so, and then we have another year for those things to be fixed and, but come the end of the twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, we're done. I mean, the, the money goes back or we haven't spent? And we wanna make sure we do a decent job, you know, trying to make sure that the fire and police got something, that they, you know, children have something, that, you know, that we've kinda spent it in reasonable ways, and so this would be, um, one place we haven't really done anything, so you, you, I think you've got a good chance.
You wanna keep going?
Well, let me see. Yeah, if you, if you have a, another copy, if you don't need them, I mean, you know, I don't know that we'll need to apply for it again, it's in the fall, but.
See you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we'll move along to.
We have an October twenty-ninth deadline if we end up.
We have, um, we have the, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary group that have put together We have, we have the, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary group that have put together some, some requests for us to approve.
Two contracts.
Two contracts. One is a string band situation. The other is a sailing masters, a fife and drum bugle corps. And those are in your packet for review. I mean, obviously, this is something sent forward and recommended by the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, you know, group that has been working very hard on this project. And so we look for a motion.
Yeah, and this falls within funding that's already been approved and allocated. So I lost my.
You can see the total contract for, for one of these is, you know, we're paying two hundred, two thousand dollars upfront, but the string band is going to cost us sixty-seven hundred total. And the drum and bugle corps, it is September twenty-first when we will have most of these events. And that is a total of. I've had this before. Uh, two thousand dollars in cents, that must be just the, unless that's the whole amount. Compensate the sailing masters, yeah. No, it's upon completion, just two thousand dollars. So that's very good. Yeah, that's one of the two thousand. The other's a total of sixty-seven hundred. And they do have authorized amounts of money for, for the town meeting for these particular events. So I would be happy to be the person to sign those if people are ready for that.
Yep, I would move to approve the agreement with Joseph A. Fernanco String Band Incorporated and Sailing's Masters of eighteen twelve Fife and Drum Corps.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Bill. Sandy, do you have specific contracts you'd like, okay. Do anything with that then. Uh, request to use town property by the Lions Club Car Show. This is an annual event and basically on South Berry Con, I'm very common from seven AM to two-thirty PM. Do you have a date on that, Sandy?
I didn't put that on yet.
No, we just.
It's September.
Yeah.
Seven?
It's, it's in your, I mean, it's on the request, September.
Okay.
September seventh.
September seventh.
Saturday, September seventh.
So that is an annual event that's been happening for, I don't know, how many years now? A lot?
A lot.
Okay. And I, I will tell you, they, they clean up after themselves like you can't believe, like an hour after the event, it's just perfect down there. Yeah.
Their, their special events application is, is going to the departments now, so that's just the first phase.
We have, we have a motion? Somebody?
I move to approve the Barry, Barry Lions Club Car Show.
September seventh?
For September seventh, that's from seven AM to two-thirty PM, across from the town common.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the use of town property by the Barry Lions Club for the purposes of its car show. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have some very simple and quick wage authorizations to take a look at. We have Eric Ayres, a medic, and he is a FD eight, step one, and he's an on-call person. And we also have Madison Quinn, same situation, EMT, that's a step three, I'm sorry, FD three and step one at nineteen thou, nineteen point fifty-eight cents an hour. And Eric Ayres, fifty-three, okay. And Eric Ayres at twenty-seven point ninety-one cents per hour. We have a motion?
I would move to approve the wage authorization for Eric Ayres for twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents an hour as a fire department eight, step one, on-call.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the wage authorizations as submitted by the fire chief.
I move to approve the wage.
We think we just need to take, take the vote. Put those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sandy, you have a motion, okay. And finally, we have old business. Do you have something?
We have a more wage authorization. I move to approve the wage.
I thought we did them both. Okay, sorry.
The wage authorization for Madison Quinn as a FD three, step one, at nineteen fifty-three per hour as an on-call firefighter slash EMT.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those are approved and we're along to old business. You have something, John? Under old business, I don't have anything under old business. Do you have anything under old business?
Oh, I do have one thing. Well, I know Tammy and Sandy have been working hard and I think Maureen, you might have been on this, but I was, showed last week that we have a place now for video recordings that are not recorded in this room. So they can be accessed online.
Except, except the one that we just did at the building for the DPW, there was no audio.
Okay.
When we went to, when we went to upload it, so.
The one before that has audio, so.
Well, to do anyways.
Okay, well, at any rate, so. Yeah, so, so at any rate, we, we do have the mechanism to do it. We're still learning, I guess.
Still some technical issues to work out with the hardware part of it, but the backend software part. Great work. Tammy and Sandy have been.
And, and also on the twenty-third, which is the Saturday coming, I will be at the Barry Library to meet with individuals, sixty individuals, we have been invited, now whether, how many will come, who have no access to cable. And we are going to introduce them to the T-Mobile hotspots that have been used by the library and so forth. And been very successful in getting, you know, individual families cable for, that actually really works. It can stream things. It's been really very well received. So we've invited those people to hear about the situation. We have, I think, another ten or fifteen, you know, pieces of equipment that we will send home with people for a period of, you know, ten to fifteen days, let them see if it works. If it works, then they can go to T-Mobile and for three hundred dollars get the thing that they need. And for fifty dollars or eighty dollars or a hundred dollars, depending on the speed they want, they pay a fee to T-Mobile. That means if it works, and we think it does because we've had a few people as trying it out in the community and have had rave reviews, that it will mean that we no longer have to depend only on landline, getting a landline with, you know, so Spectrum can provide that service. Spectrum has been extremely difficult to negotiate with, if, if I even could call them a partner in negotiation. And so we're really happy to have that opportunity and the library has been very helpful. And we're hopeful that this will be a, a, a way in which people can get the internet that they need.
I'm even considering borrowing one to see how well it works.
I, I tell you, the people who have borrowed them, and the people have been borrowing for a long period of time from the library, for ten days or fifteen days because they had to do work from home or whatever. And they, we also had at one time the Verizon, okay, in-home internet and didn't work around town as, as well as T-Mobile. T-Mobile boasts, if you go online and read about T-Mobile, they boast that they have the best rural community service in the nation. And Forbes says they do.
They do my use of.
Yeah, Forbes says they do. So I would say that we're really excited about that, getting those people who say they, they just haven't had the opportunity through Spectrum. It's been very frustrating for them and very frustrating for us as we've tried to negotiate a reasonable accommodation from them. But when they're the only game in town, they don't, they just say, this is, you want it? This is what it's going to cost you. I mean, they went from two-hundred-and-fifty thousand before COVID to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do sixty homes. We said, we're not doing that. So we're hoping that this will be a, a response to the needs of that group of folks. And we keep our fingers crossed that people show up on Saturday at the library. And if they don't, well, we'll do another session or try to get people to come in and at least try, try the, try the particular piece of equipment. We've got some people who are like out in the back, back end of the communities that have. So we're eager to get them in here to say, no, you try it because Lowering Road is easy, right? Lowering Road, we can't imagine it's going to cost us, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars for those fifteen houses right in a row with all the poles available. So the, the group of people in that area who have been trying it from the library are just, they can't believe it. They cannot believe they have, now have internet service that actually works. So we're good about that.
Is bringing a third party, not a supplier, but a third party to run on the poles not an option because the phone company and the cable company?
Right. They own, okay, the cable companies, which is Spectrum, they own two feet, which is where, okay, that wiring goes. And Matrix, who came in, is supposed to be doing Spring Hill Road, and I think he'll be retired from any jobs by then. By the time they, I think we paid about a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand dollars for, it was about ten houses, I think. And every time, I mean, and they, and they barely, I, they say they're ready to go live. Are they ready to go live?
No.
No. And, and it's been years now. When I first came on the board of Selectmen, we made a deal with Matrix to come off of Peter Sam. And, and but trying to get Spectrum to negotiate, okay, a way, their license. I mean, it just took forever for Matrix and I think they were really sad they ever got involved with trying to work with Spectrum.
Did you ever figure out if you can use the federal access grant?
We know. You know why? Because technically, when we make our reports, we have more than ninety-plus percent of our town with internet access. So they say you can't qualify. You have to have, you know, eighty, only eighty percent have it. You, you can't be well in the nineties. They just think, well, I'm sorry, but you don't qualify for the grant. So trust me, we've looked at all of those. We just don't qualify. I mean, for, for those sixty or seventy people who don't have it, it's as grievous as if we had, you know, eighty percent, but. So hopeful if we could get, you know, most of those people serviced this way, we would be very excited about that. And now we have people, which may be bad news for, for Spectrum, who are coming off of Spectrum and saying, this is cheaper. Why should we pay Spectrum blank if we can get, because some people just have Spectrum for internet. They have other ways in which they get their TV, maybe satellite or whatever. So it's an, it's an interesting thing and I, I would suspect over time, the model that probably T-Mobile has is probably more, it's going to be the norm than landline.
I mean, I, I would, I would say internet-based TV and internet-based phone is, you know, the way it's moving. You're not going to have your own phone. I mean, you're not going to have a landline for, I don't have a landline. I don't have a cable package. I just.
Just because I, it's in the house.
Yeah, yeah.
And plus I've worked with the phone company for years.
Okay, anything else in your old business?
Oh, yep.
No, I would like to make a request on the board to have called for another Selectmen's meeting between now and the election. To fix the rest, some of the stuff that's still hanging up around the fire department and the situation there.
Can you be specific about what's hanging out, just so we can make sure we address things?
In fact, the, the bid or grant application called for one piece of apparatus. And then what was voted on at town meeting is a different piece. So one was for tanker and one was for an engine. And that's not been addressed.
Yeah, I.
My knowledge is probably it's not total on any five percent, matching funds for, for the tanker. So that is a question. There's a number of questions that have happened.
Yeah, I would certainly indicate that I would be in opposition to trying to do that meeting before the election. I would suggest you do it after the election so you actually know to whom or, or who's going to be moving, moving forward. Also, we have the major police contract issues to, to resolve with our attorney and so on and so forth, so.
So I disagree.
Well, disagree.
I'm a, I'm a citizen, as you know.
I do know.
For forty-five years.
I do know.
And I, and I, I'm honored that you say that I'm a.
You're ex officio, fourth of, yeah.
Select person on Sunday. In an effort of transparency, I think we ought to open, you guys ought to open the, the board and if somebody wants to come in and has an issue and they ask to have it done quickly. I think it's the obligation of the board to say, yes, we'd love to have, because we want to be transparent.
Well, the thing of it is.
And if you, if you remember earlier when I spoke, I said something about Marshallville. Maureen, go, whatever it was. There's a, there's, I think, Maureen, you need to be extra careful.
Sam. Wait, 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 wait. I just want to be clear.
Hold on, John.
No, no, no. I don't want anyone telling anyone to be extra careful. We're not making threats right now.
No.
Everyone needs to simmer down.
This is not a threat.
Let him talk.
Okay, okay.
Let him talk.
Careful.
Okay.
To act, remember I wrote that letter, whether you read it or not, it's in the records.
Yep, I read it.
But you need to be extra careful to make sure this board acts as a board.
Okay, okay.
And in regards to what Neil Anderson's just mentioned, I don't see a problem with the problem. So it's, so it's another half an hour. And I bet you're going to have a lot more people here to talk about this fire track because we just talked about the budget and we just talked about the fact that we may go over and it may be tight.
Okay.
I, I think you guys, and I'd like to get somebody make a motion and make a second that we have time at this next meeting before the election.
I don't understand the relevance to the election. Can you explain that to me?
I can.
Okay, sure.
No, I'm not. The election represents perhaps a change in government.
Okay.
And maybe what might be said at this meeting might give citizens an indication why.
Listen, I, I know.
We might need a change in government.
Listen, I know what the game plan is. It's we're going to, we're going to come here and we're going to play, let's beat the crap out of Marshall. I get what the interest is. No, 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 don't interrupt me. Let me at least once, at least once.
I'm talking and then I'm.
You're always talking.
I'm talking and then you keep talking next. Is that we need to be open.
Yep.
This board historically has been closed. And I think when a citizen comes in and says, we want you to be open and talk about a half a million dollars of fire tracks and what the problem is and what the problem isn't, and why he keeps on, why people keep on bringing, bringing up these, these, these theories. I think it's logical for you guys to say, we open up board.
So, if I may, if I may, okay, before everyone jumps in, we opened up the whole floor. We had a big meeting about this, what was it, two meetings ago? We addressed a lot of questions about that. You've provided two more questions just now. One of those was addressed at that meeting and I'd be happy to go back over that again. But the point is, I don't know how many times we need to rehash it. We can go through it again. I don't see a point to the rushing it. At, at the end of the day, this was the decision that was made. We presented it. We need to focus on other things as well. I'm not saying we can't focus on this again. But I think it's, it's a little strange to say, this is what the election's built up. Like, at the end of the day, there were three people on the board at that time. Two of those people are still here. I mean, it's the, it's the town. At some point, we need to move, we, we need to work as a town. We, we've been open about this. I, I wrote down everything I could think of, put a timeline together. I don't know how much more open I can be. I don't know the answer to the first question. I need to look into that. I also need time to look into that.
John, I.
I would also point out to you, if I could talk for just a minute, Sam. I also point out to you, it's very strange to me that this is the meeting that you want to have when the fire chief is deployed. So he's not going to be here. He can't be here.
That is a very critical component.
Don't you think?
That, that, and we just heard about, I just heard about that, but I want you to know about your report. Remember, John, you made a good report and I commended you for, for writing such a report. However, when you wrote the report, you, you linked engine and tanker together. And all of your mentions, and I think that Mark might.
Right, isn't it an engine tanker?
No, but it's different. There's an engine and then there's a tanker. It's separate.
But there's, an engine tanker is different from an engine or a tanker.
You seem to link these.
So an engine tanker, as, as I understand it, an engine tanker is a vehicle that is different from a standard engine where it has a larger water capacity, but it also has reduced capacity of people and it has more equipment than, it has more equipment than a tanker, but it has less personnel than an engine because it's an engine tanker. That's my understanding.
I'll let you explain this.
Again, I'm not on the fire department. I don't, I did not write this for.
And I think you have a very good point that the chief is deployed. Unless the real has an answer response to that, the chief's not here.
Well, I'm not.
He has an assistant and he wants to go.
I'm, I'm just saying that the chief is deployed. He's the individual who has the most, okay, information and credibility from my perspective on this matter. To have the, to have this meeting in a rush before the election, okay, is really very transparent, I will say.
The other thing I want to say on this is if, if you guys.
You know what I meant, Ms. Tammy. You know what I meant.
First of all, if, if I, no, before, before we go.
I've interrupted five times in a row. Let me interrupt first.
Excuse, you need, well, if we want to go by rules of order, you need to be called on by the chair. How's that sound? Should we go to traditional rules of order?
Can I say something? Every complaint you've had, all the passports run the same way. You've had complaints about that before.
Thank you for that, for that interruption.
You're welcome.
So you just, I just asked a question. There was no vote taken. You can't execute it from you.
What are you talking about?
I asked to have another Selectmen's meeting between now.
Yeah.
And the election. You answered for everyone. You didn't answer for them.
We haven't had a chance to.
We haven't.
You didn't ask them. That's how a board works. Let me tell you how a board is supposed to work.
I'll entertain an emotion to adjourn.
No, I, I, wait, wait, wait. I move to have another meeting for.
What is your name? Well, Sullivan?
I move to have a meeting, as requested, before the election to discuss this.
Without the fire chief?
Without the fire chief. I move to have that meeting. Is there a second?
Um, hold on, question. Would it be beneficial for the fire chief to be here?
Oh, it would be beneficial, but James can do it. He's, he's the captain. He can answer the question.
I think the chief wrote the grant.
Do you feel as though?
I feel it would be adequate to have.
Well, I don't.
To have it just with the.
The chief wrote the grant. The chief is the person.
I understand all the rules, Maureen. Thank you for the illustration.
Really?
I'm going to call for, I, I move to call for a vote. No, no, we need a second.
I, I would, if, if you think James.
Yes.
I would second it, if you think.
Do you think so?
Well, if, if, because James actually, on the grant, is the second, he's the second name on the grant, so he should be able.
His name is David.
That's what I'm saying.
So I moved to call, I moved to call the vote. I moved to call the vote.
No.
No. No.
I?
There you have it. It's a board decision.
So, so let me, since I have.
Your gentleman back with his adjournment.
Sure.
So, uh, I've lived in town for thirteen years. I, I'm a part of a committee with the town. Uh, my kids go to the school, uh, between sports and socializing with the town. I talk to a lot of people. Uh, I talk to a lot of town employees. Recently, uh, it's been brought to my attention, uh, Mr. Andrews brought up, uh, liability and litigation earlier, so this kind of fits in there. Recently, it's brought to my attention that a select board member is, uh, conducting surveillance on some of the town employees, uh, within certain departments upwards and including photographing and videotaping, uh, residents being loaded out of their homes on stretchers into the back of ambulance. It brings up a huge liability. It brings up a huge legal concern. It brings up laws that are passed across, uh, ethical concerns with HIPAA. So, you know, I, I would say that there should be some type of ethical investigation on, on this. They may not be true, but I've heard it from no less than eight people. So, you know, I think there should be an investigation on board members if this is true.
Sure.
I'd recommend it.
It's about you.
What's that?
It's about you.
I, I don't video anyone. I don't video anyone. I, I don't, I don't, I do not.
All right, let's not get into this right now. Let's, all right, we're asking.
I don't video anybody. Um, I, I.
We should be.
I've been videoed myself. Um, I don't have any videos on any town employees, okay? I know where you're hearing it from. It doesn't happen. So.
I've heard it from numerous people.
That's, I know where they all come from.
Yeah, all of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would recommend that we ask town council.
Take my phone.
Ask Tammy to seek.
This is all I carry. I, I'd be more than happy to submit it all. I, I do not video. I sit on the comments. I get people going by me. I have, there was a town employee that was videoing my property on my road, okay? I don't, I, I stood fifteen feet from him and watched him. He knew it was there.
No.
Yeah, if you go to the restroom, if I may.
Excuse me, I didn't know.
Um, Mr. Bombretti, you are wrong and get your facts straight.
So how about we determine what the facts are?
Sign this.
Excuse, all right. I, I think it would be appropriate to ask Tammy.
I, I recommend an investigation.
Yes, all right. Well, ask Tammy to seek guidance on how to begin an investigation of this one.
Let's rock and roll enough.
So, you asked me to talk.
Yeah, yeah, please. I am acting chair now.
So, I want to bring up something, why I am carrying this case.
Okay.
Right now. On February the seventh.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty twenty-two, I brought a lawsuit to this board. I was suing the selectmen. I brought it here and presented it to that chair, O'Sullivan, at that meeting. If you go back and you look at the minutes of that meeting, it doesn't reflect that I even spoke.
Okay.
The document, the lawsuit, is not shown anywhere in any of the records. Maureen has just left the room, but she was on that board back then.
It's just the last meeting where they threw you out.
No, that was another one. So, they received the document.
Okay.
It's right there on the side of the desk. I brought this to Sandy and asked her what happened to the document. I'm not sure when that was. Six months ago? From something like that?
Well, there should be, uh.
Whatever it was. And so I said, where's that document? And you said, I don't know, maybe Greg O'Sullivan put it in his great case.
He did.
Okay, you did? I didn't see that. I, I was, I had.
Well, there should be video. The meetings were recorded in two thousand twenty-two.
Come back and watch it. He didn't give it to us. We didn't even know.
Is that on video?
It should be. Two thousand twenty-two, it should be.
Show me, put it down on the desk. I'm saying, I'm suing this board.
But he had gotten it a week prior. He didn't tell anybody.
That's not much. I already know that now.
I'm just telling you, when you came to, when you came to the meeting, it's when we knew about it.
Okay, so.
But he is supposed to put that in part of the minutes of the meeting. That is, that's a legal document. It's like anything else that is part of this meeting. If someone gave you a document tonight, it's part of that package.
So that's on the board.
Maureen signed off and said that everything was legit and there was no mention of me suing the board.
Right, so that, that would be on the board for approving those minutes at the next meeting.
On the board?
Yes.
And it's on this board to go back and look? You say you want to investigate, investigate that?
Okay, I will take a look at February seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Where is, where is that all, what happened to that?
What year?
And that's why I'm carrying.
Two thousand twenty-two. February seventh, two thousand twenty-two is, I will, I will look at, for that video.
So, yeah, I have a charge because.
Okay.
I, my rights have been abridged. I, when I sued the, the town, I was suing under four articles of the state constitution.
Okay.
Four articles. That's what was listed in my complaint. I got a letter back from then a town administrator, which was Sizer, Jessica Sizer, and it said that the, the board is not in violation of open meeting laws.
Okay.
I, you know, why do I want to see some transparency? Why do you think, John?
I'm offering you transparency. I, I put out everything I could find.
You offer me transparency. I want transparency between now and the election so we don't, we don't continue this charade of, of a governance that is not happening.
Okay, this is the first I've heard of this lawsuit. I'm going to look into this.
I did.
I, no, I, I am going to look into it. I appreciate that.
Documentation of what I presented, the letters back from AG's office.
Mm-hmm, okay.
From Laura, now governor.
If you are comfortable sharing any of that with me, that would be great.
I'd like to see what you come up with first.
Okay, I'll take a look through. All right, now let's go.
That's why I, that's why I have a charge of. Because I've, I've been overridden and oh, you know, and overshadowed it in sixty seconds and you're shut off?
And, and.
What, what, where in God's name have we gotten that? We put up a monument to all the people who have died to give liberty to this country and then you abridged? That doesn't work for me.
As you can see, we're not strictly following that one-minute thing. I believe that was.
No, and you never have.
You never have. You never have.
We're giving opportunity to speak.
He wasn't on the agenda. He talked for forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
From who?
Kowski. When he came here, made his presentation on the nineteenth September in twenty-three, he talked for forty-five, fifty minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you. Because I'm just John Q. Public and I don't have the same response. I don't, you know, kiss down, and kiss your ring, you don't like it. And you don't like the fact that I'm bringing contrary points of view. And why do I not like, why do you not like it? When I'm telling you the truth about being suing the selectmen and then not even putting it in the minutes of the meeting. That burdened me.
Again, I didn't know about that.
Big time.
I'm, I'm, I, at no point tonight have I tried to limit what you can talk about. I've tried to engage with you, engage in the conversation, and I know that's come across as cutting you off at times and I apologize for that.
Sometimes you have to do that.
And, uh, so I, I, you know, I do think, you know, as far as the lawsuit, I absolutely want to look into that because this is the first I'm hearing of it. I'll review those, that video. Um, as far as the fire truck goes, you'll remember from the meeting when that option came up to us with the grant. I was the one who was on board for that, who tried to convince Maureen and Greg to, to do the, that option with the fire truck.
Which the only, because it's been painted into a corner. That is really the truly only option we have, except throw away a lot of money.
Yep.
But the fact that the, the vote at the town meeting was one thing and that Greg was written for another and you try to co-mingle it, that's illegal. You know, FEMA is not going to go along with changing in process, the grant process. That ain't ever happening. And so, you know, you can look at that one too.
Are we ready to adjourn?
No, we're not adjourned. I'm, I'm talking here.
Thank you.
Yeah, King Neil, just like O'Sullivan.
Well, you know.
You know, you put a, you made, you made me put up with that tyrant.
I made you put up with that tyrant.
Yeah, you're part of the board. You were on that board and you could have had a voice and you didn't shut him up.
I didn't shut him up. He was.
No, you didn't. You never objected once to his tirades and, and his blackardness. And you, and we all sat here and were run over by that tyrant.
And you never objected once when he refused to wear a mask and you were sitting next to him. And if I were sitting next to him, I'd say to the other selectmen, uh, the meeting is closed. We're all, we're all leaving the meeting and let him stay and rot right where he would. But he, nobody did that.
All due respect, everything about Greg, he's not on the board anymore.
I know, that's, that's, we always have that for an argument, that and the budget. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, we need to get some of these things addressed.
Okay.
There need, things need to change here. And they're not to change after a laundry list, you know, I mean, case in point, oh, five, six weeks ago, six weeks ago, there was a list you gave, and I have it on, on my, I don't have it with me, about all the things that needed to take place and correct and have transparency. And, uh, and so, uh, what happened on that? What, what happened on that?
Well, we've made progress, as we heard tonight, that now meetings that aren't in this room are being recorded and those are showing up. We have a place for those to go online. That's a big step towards transparency.
Well, it's a lot more that can be done here.
Yep, and there's still steps to be done.
God to do it. When, when we have department heads that meet with and say, you know, it's going to be, uh, X, Y, Z happening and the public doesn't know. I mean, ARPA, I don't know what's happened with ARPA. I'll, why isn't there somewhere, if I could go to the website, it should be here. This is what we did. Why didn't, why didn't this board request maybe some input from the town? What we, what the citizens wanted, not what you've got to tell us it's going to spend for. That's what other towns did and they did it publicly. They made it online what people's requests were and what was going to, what, how, what the determination was. This town doesn't do that. Everything's secret.
It's not.
I don't know.
So, one of the biggest challenges we've had.
Who stole money from the town? Well, you can't talk about that because it's, uh, you know, whatever, some, some secret.
What woman stole money from that town?
Marshall. He's talking about Marshall.
That's like decades ago.
Yeah, but you haven't disclosed anything what happened to it. What happened? Did the money, was any of the money retrieved? Did she go to jail? What happened?
Yeah, no, she went to jail. That was in the newspaper.
What, where is it written anywhere that any of this happened?
I believe in the newspaper, it said she went to jail for three years.
Hey, we got any money back?
You get some back.
I think there was, what, insurance? I don't, I mean, I'm pulling on news articles from when I was a kid right now, but I mean.
It was in the Barry Gazette.
Yeah.
I don't know anything.
I mean, we, we can, you know, a good resource for that, well, a good resource for that would be the library. They have all the Barry Gazzettes on file. You're absolut, I bet Joe could help you find that.
I'd be glad to be informed.
Yeah.
But I, that's what I'm talking about.
So, one of the difficulties we have was.
It's not, it's not the, maybe the nuts and bolts, but it's like, you know, I, I also have a little bit of a case on the butt because I, I did six years on the energy committee, right? I did six years on the planning board. I did my bid on the planning board. It was punishment, right? Because that's, you, the only place you go in this town and be wrong no matter what choice you make. That's the way it works. And all of this happens. And then when you get done, you've done six years, get up.
Yeah.
No thank you, no go kiss it, nothing. Nothing. And the, same with the energy committee. Same with the, the review for town administrator. Summarily dismissed, done a thank you, nothing. This is, this is transparency? If any more transparency, I've had enough.
You absolutely deserve appreciation for the time you served.
Well, it's too late now.
I'm sorry, I don't.
That's why I have the attitude.
No, I, I understand that and I, you know, I wasn't even, I wasn't aware of a lot of the things that happened when I was, you know, a kid.
Yeah, so this, this is what happened and it needs to change.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, so they reported.
The whole deal with this, this fire truck is bad. It's a bad deal. It was not handled efficiently at all and needs to be addressed. The townspeople have not been served. They voted on a fire engine for seven hundred and fifteen grand. What they got was two. They got two and a grant for four hundred and seventy-three.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they got a fire truck for seven hundred and fifty.
Fifteen, which they got paid for.
Yep, and a separate fire truck.
And a separate fire.
For free.
They didn't vote on it. Where's the authority?
It's a free truck.
Where's the authority to accept the grant? Where's the, it comes with, from the governor. That's where the authority comes from, from the governor.
And, and as we discussed at the last meeting.
That brought to the townspeople at a town meeting.
And as we discussed at the last meeting, we are looking at ways to implement with, how we accept grants.
Okay.
You know, obviously the, you know, the police chief was here. He had, uh, two different grants for the drone. You know, we, we are working on procedures and processes for that.
That's, I understand going forward. Right now, you've got to go back and clean up because.
I'm not sure what there is to clean up with the fire truck, other than rehashing it.
The townspeople don't know. When I have the, the taxpayers association means people are unclear. They, they weren't asked.
We can absolutely talk about it more, but I don't know that there's anything to change as far as going back to clean that up. So I, I.
You ought to talk to council.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that that's democracy, I would, excuse me, how that's supposed to work.
And we can work on plans and procedures moving forward. And I think that's critical right now.
And you gotta go back and address the, what's already happened. You can't just sweep it under the rug. This.
I'm more than happy to address it. I don't know that there's any action to take other than addressing it and.
You've got to bring it to the townsfolk because they don't know what happened.
Okay, we had a meeting about this a couple of sessions ago.
But you haven't owned the fact that there was no vote, folks. We did not vote in town meeting to have another fire truck.
I'm not sure what you would like at this point, though.
Block, block.
So, at, at this point, are you asking for a vote at the town meeting to, to what?
I think you guys should make up your mind what you want. You're the selectmen.
Okay.
I'm just saying, that would be, to me, that would make a great deal of sense to go back and own your, own the FOPA. There was a FOPA, you know? I don't know if it was intentional or not, but there was a FOPA.
Okay.
And you need to have the taxpayers say, hey, we get it. You know, you made a mistake. Okay, no big deal. Let's go forward. Or whatever they do. I don't know. But right now, just sweeping the end of the carpet isn't working for me at all.
I'm, I'm really doing my best to do anything other than sweep it under the carpet. That's why I'm putting together timelines and researching this.
But I know you want to do that.
If you'd like to send me a list, I would, I'd be happy to go through.
I understand, but that's to deflect.
No, I, I can't be prepared for questions. I don't, I don't know the answers. I just don't without Googling it.
But when you put down in your, the last presentation declaration you, the printed, I thought it was really interesting, John, that everywhere in that document, it was noted